All right, I'll call the regular meeting of the Anderson County Commissioners Court to order on October the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at nine thirty a.m. Show that a quorum is present of all members of the court present, separate commissioners, and first item on the agenda is going to be the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So if y'all stand with me, we go to the Lord in prayer and then we'll do the pledge.
About when we should go to the Lord in prayer?
Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to come and represent our citizens and ask you for your guidance, Lord, that we make decisions that are pleasing to you and in the best interest of our community and all of our citizens that live here. Ask you, Lord, to be with our military men and women, especially those en route to Israel, Lord, and ask you to keep them safe and meet their needs and bring them back safely. When some of this conflict is over, we ask you to be with our first responders throughout our community and and throughout the country, Lord, as they take care of us and make sure that we stay safe. Ask you to be with be with all of our employees, Lord, that you lift them up and if their family members are in need, Lord, or they're in need, that you keep them safe. Ask you to go with it through this day and bless our lives to thy service. These things in Jesus's name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
You'll join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody signed up for a public comment?
No, sir.
Commissioner Maum, please. Okay. All right, next we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted with one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. However, any consent agenda item may be removed for individual consideration pursuant to a request by a Commissioners Court member. We have budget amendments, number one fourteen through one twenty-four. Also, we have approving bills. Do we have any utilities crossing county roads?
I have none.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. And then receive the district judge's order setting the county auditor salary and the all the office staff in the county auditor's office also receive the district judge's order setting the court reporter's salary. There's no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number five is take, consider to take action on approving replating of the Meadow Section four, five, six into Sections four R and six R. And we have Charlene Hall here with us today. I think this is in precinct three?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So we have, I have my house, six there in Meadows about fifteen years, and we purchased lot four and five about three years ago. And we were just letting, we're gonna re-survey out, just splitting the middle lot, lot five, to make lot four in the corner larger and to make out just a little larger. This has been done a couple, two, three times in the neighborhood. We just think a little more room on the other side of our house in response to the zero on lot, kind of a deal. So this gives each lot extra, and I think that now lot four R would be point eight acres instead of just right at five.
You had a chance to review?
Yeah.
I know Kathy said everything was.
Yeah, it's just they're combining them two lots and renumbering them.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the replating of Meadow Section four, five, six into Section four R and six R. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Chapin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So ordered. Okay. Thank you. And we'll get that signed.
Passage tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Natasha. Yeah, you leave.
Item number six is consider and take action on a reappointment of Mr. Jimmy Terrell as the Director of the Natures and Trinity Valley Groundwater Conservation District. He's agreed to serve. He's been serving so. Unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Jimmy Terrell as the Director of the Natures and Trinity Valley Groundwater Conservation District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, consider and take action on approving a service contract with Terminex for termite control for the Anderson County Courthouse and authorize the county judge to sign a contract agreement. Y'all should have a copy of that in your package. When they were tearing the roof off, the, we found termites in the roof of the courthouse in and around the chimney where the boiler comes up through it. So back in April of two thousand, I went back with Terminex. In April of two thousand, we had termites in the basement of the courthouse when I was in office before. And that was in what used to be Judge Hunt's office. And they'd been there for a while. So back then, we did a chemical treatment into the window seals and knocked those out, put bait stations around the courthouse as a preventative measure and had an agreement with them. That didn't get paid for some reason back in two thousand fifteen or sixteen. So we'd had it all those years. And all I'm asking the court is a preventative measure to protect our courthouse. There's a chem treatment that they can do around the whole courthouse. And then they're gonna, the bait stations are still there from before. So instead of having to put, install them all, they can pull those out and put more current bait stations in. So the so the total for doing the chemical treatment, subterraneous chemical treatment is eighty-five thirty-nine fifty-six. And then to do the bait stations to replace all those is twelve fifteen. But the reoccurring cost, I think, was four fifty a year, I believe. Isn't that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to protect our court, I mean, we had, we had them in there and fortunately, we didn't find them but in one place, correct? Steve, you in it? Okay. And that was in and around. So they went up there and we did a purchase order and they went in and treated that area and then right down at the, at the base of the chimney, in and around the ground there to try to make sure that we got them all. But I'm just asking the court as a preventative measure to approve the contract with Terminex to put that back in place.
Contract services.
So it'd be that cost and then per four hundred and fifty a year after that? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. In other words, this would get us back started with a good chemical treatment all the way around the courthouse.
Yeah.
That way, if there is any more activity, we.
Yeah. And then the four fifty a year just be there again.
That's the recurring contract.
Yeah, being, yeah. How long is the contract for? Three years? Renewal says three.
It usually renewes every year. That's what, that's what we had before.
Gotcha.
And it just did, for whatever reason, it didn't get paid back in fifteen or sixteen and it expired. So.
So we gotta start over?
Yes, sir. I don't have any questions. Oh, all right. I just want to make sure if y'all had questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with Terminex for the treatment of the courthouse and then a continuing contract agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Maum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Okay. Item number eight is consider and take action to approve and authorize a county judge to sign a contract on previously approved quote by Commissioners Court on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three with a CDW Government LLC for disaster recovery. Do y'all have that in your package?
No, I didn't see it, did it?
We got the, you sent it to Allison.
Right. That's the one that we were gonna have to pass on because we don't have a contract yet.
Okay.
They've sent us one, but we sent it to, we had to make some recommendations and changes and sent that to Allison. It just didn't have enough time.
Okay. All right. So we'll need to pass on that until the district attorney gets complete review then. All right, item number nine is consider and take action on a quote from Granicus. And that's, I think they go by Swagga too, to record and transcribe the Commissioners Court minutes for Anderson County Clerk's Office, authorize the county judge to sign a contract. And I've got Natasha Haley. We're gonna do a team's meeting up on the screen. So let me join right quick on the meeting. She's gonna do a presentation for the court. Can you hear us, Natasha? Uh-oh. We got speakers on? Hang on just a second. Just a second. We gotta turn the speakers on for the courtroom.
They're on.
They're on? No, no. Hold on. I might have to put my microphone down there. Just a second. Are you gonna be able to?
If you can hear me, give me a thumbs up, Natasha. Okay.
Yeah, she can hear us. And she's coming through this microphone.
Through the speaker?
Yeah, she's coming through the speaker.
That makes it easy then.
I can just put this down.
Give me another sound check, Natasha.
I'm trying to. How many?
Yes, sir. I was supportive of that. That whole neighborhood back there, that's the same tree until this. This is the start of it. And he's the only house I went to because they're fallen and filthy as fuck.
Yes.
So I'm saying, I'm gonna go over there and let her know what we're doing. I can do that. Somebody's something clear to have.
So you go out and try to get prices or use a car seat. I don't know. Kinda getting out there wasn't a cost.
I know I did. Wasn't a cost.
I don't know either.
But I mean, that's a good part.
Yes.
They figured that part. And there's, I mean, it's a tree, it's a tree. One fell while back, not the fire.
I think you're coming through this.
Okay, great. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Natasha Hollis.
Hang on, hang on just a second, Natasha. Hang on a minute. Two. I'm trying to minimize my hand. Hold on.
That's good. Go to two hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah, we can make that work.
I was talking about, I think yours is, the screen is minimized, isn't it? For your presentation?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
I think it's. Let me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, don't, there it is. You're good.
You should be able to see Montgomery County, Texas. Is that what's showing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. And it looks okay?
Yes. That's important for presentation.
Does it look okay, Judge?
Well, it does. I just thought if you could make it a little, the screen bigger.
I think it may have to be on your end to make it bigger because mine's already at one hundred and twenty-five percent.
Hold on, hold on. If I bring it up, it should go up. All right, I'll just do this one. Okay, now, now we see a lot better.
Okay, fantastic. Well, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to do a presentation with you guys today. I work for a company called Granicus, formerly Swagga. So we sometimes interchange or get into Granicus Swagga and kind of referring to it in two different ways. But the company is Granicus. And the sample that I want to share with you guys today is Montgomery County, Texas. They've been a client now for many, many years. And what we do for them is something very unique. We're the only ones in the industry that can provide these types of services that we provide. We provide, we provided them with a camera solution where we do the remote operation of the directing of the cameras in Dallas, Texas. And so at the beginning of the meeting, we take the live shots. We do close-ups of the Commissioners. We also do a presentation feed. If someone is giving a presentation or showing something on PowerPoint, that way residents that are watching from home, which is extremely important for counties because most of the time the meetings are during the day and a lot of people can't get to those meetings. So being able to see everything just as if they were there in person is really important to us. And what's nice is that you're IT or, you know, county clerk, nobody has to be AV. That's actually offloaded out to us. So kind of what we were just going through a minute ago, all of those things would really be handled by our staff remotely the day or night of your meeting. And so in addition to running the cameras, directing the cameras, we would also be putting these timestamps into the video so that residents can come back after the fact. They can jump right to the topic of interest without needing to watch the entire meeting. We also integrate your agenda document into the video player. So there again, residents can follow along using the agenda document. We would also be providing this transcript of the meeting so that residents can jump to very specific points in the meeting. And if you notice, I click on different points in the meeting and the video changes to that exact specific point. This is really helpful, especially for Commissioners. Going back to reoccurring items, you can go to the very specific point that you're interested in without having to do rewind, fast forward. Going back to that camera system, we would also be putting lower third graphics on the bottom of the video that show the date and time and the item that you're speaking on. So really good detailed information on the live stream, but then it gets recorded that way so that the recording also has that really good detailed information. Now, probably one of the most important features that I do want to share with you is, I apologize, I thought I had this up. Is this feature right here? This is a transcript of the entire meeting. This would be provided to you four days following the meeting. This would have actually Judge McKinney's name and Commissioner, you know, Jenkins. It would have actual those indications there heading there. But this is a complete transcript of the meeting of what everyone said. And this is great because this is going to help, if not replace the minutes in that process. So it's gonna cut down on that time. Now, we do need the video. We do need the camera directing, all of that in order to be able to provide this transcript. But this transcript is going to be a big time saver for the county clerk. Being able to get this transcript four days later, you can edit it, you know, put in anything that you feel like maybe we missed, but otherwise it should be pretty much ready to go.
And this is.
So the idea.
This, this is one, one of the YouTube videos that y'all took and did the transcript of, correct?
Correct. And we just did like a short, full thirty-minute part of the meeting. We didn't do the entire meeting. It was more for an example to show you guys the quality and the level of service that we can provide. But the idea behind the solution is that it's completely hands-free so that you guys continue to go back to work after the meeting. The next day or that same day, all of the video is going to be posted and archived to your website without you guys needing to touch or do anything at all. So the really, the only responsibility on your end would be turning on the audio system and turning off the audio system and controlling the in-room content as far as what's being shown on PowerPoint. But in terms of what gets shown on the screen, our rectors are selecting that input on the switcher so that it is actually showing on the live stream. But the idea again is being completely hands-free, providing that transcript to you four business days later to really help with that transcription process. We do not need to receive the PowerPoint before the meeting or anything like that. The PowerPoint is on your presentation system. And again, our switcher is just taking that input so that residents can follow along at home. There are a few little communication features also. So if you want to start the video from this point, this is probably proformation this particular mayor is giving out. And this is great content. If you want to share that quickly out to social media, I think that's really important to highlight the good things that are happening in the community. And you can do that within a matter of seconds. Probably the most well-received feature is coming here to search the video in your archive. And so just coming back up a little bit, this right here, this I-brain gets embedded into your website. So your residents are not having to go out to YouTube anymore. You're not having to worry about YouTube taking down any content if somebody says anything is not accurate or true. This is a complete representation of your meeting embedded into your site. It's not gonna affect your storage for your website. It's not gonna affect your network. It's one connection from the county to our content delivery network. Our content delivery network is going to mirror out all those additional live streams to your end users without it affecting your network. And then coming back to the search feature here, I'm gonna type in the word water into the archive, hit enter. And it's gonna search every meeting where somebody said the word water. And it's gonna keep it around there, the sentence around it. You can click on that link and it's gonna open up the video exactly to that point in the meeting where somebody said the word water. So this is definitely a very well-received feature of being able to go back and find content. Your residents are gonna be able to do these searches to reduce the public record requests. They'll be able to find information very quickly at their fingertips and get that content without having to contact the county. So we see this more of a self-service for residents. Because there's not a back end to the system that I have to train you guys on, literally, there's no training since we're doing all of the work and labor for you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Now, I think you, you quoted twenty-five meetings, but you'll still cover, if we had a special meeting or budget meetings, you're still gonna cover those in addition, correct? Up to about thirty, up to about thirty meetings?
Well, we don't really put a limit on it. So it's however many special budget meetings you have, we will take care of that. We just have to have some consistency with a number. We just have to have some consistency with a number sequence, and so twenty-five meetings usually covers the council or commissioner court meetings of the month. But all of our clients have special budget meetings, and so we cover those as well.
Okay.
And you did state that, um, all of your PowerPoints that was presented from out in the audience or up here on the bench would be in record? So that people could see them when they're viewing the Commissioners Court, correct?
Yes sir, they'd be able to watch the live stream, and in the live stream, it's not going to be a camera that goes over to the screen. It's an actual ingested V into the switcher, so they're getting that presentation as if they were here in person. Nice, crisp, clean presentation.
Okay, cause I know like, um, I got like a call about some stuff that was viewed from outside, and I think a couple of things that come from court where, uh, people were saying that they requested records from our Commissioners Court, and like some of our PowerPoints was not included in those.
So, are you talking about the videos?
Yes, any, anything that's shown from out in the audience, behind the podium there, or behind the bench?
Yes sir, that's exactly what your residents would be watching from home on the live stream as well as on the recording.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get lucky here and find a spot in this particular meeting where someone is giving a presentation.
Thank you.
Um, we usually will switch from the podium, the person that's speaking, to the presentation. And then we'll stay on the presentation, and if it looks like they're staying on the slide for a while, we'll go back to the podium shot. So that people can still see who is still doing the presentation. Um, Hayes County, I think, does a great job of doing it a little bit different. And I believe Judge, this was something that you also liked, um, but really this is up to you guys. In terms of the style of your meetings and the layout and how you would prefer us to run the meeting. But this particular client, Hayes County, they wanted us to do a picture-in-picture. Let's see if this meeting, see how they got the presenter here? And then they've got a wide shot, so we can do things in kind of a different way depending on what your style is. Um, some people want us to show the agenda in the smaller window. Some people want the PowerPoint presentation in the big window, and then the presenter in the smaller window. And so we can play around with that, and you know, you guys can help us to determine what's your preferred style.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then the first fee in the quote is going to be essentially a setup fee. That, that first block of fees, and then the rest of it is reoccurring. I thank you. Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, so this is a one-time cost Swag It or Grandicus, we do the installation ourselves, we come on-site. We're usually there three to four days for installation. On the last day that we're there, we will train your staff on how to use the camera system locally, should you ever want to. But almost all of our clients prefer just to outsource the full meeting and production to Swag It. Uh, but certainly if like there's a press conference or something, you know, maybe the judge wants to do there locally, you guys can turn the system on and use the system there locally. Uh, there's nothing proprietary about the camera solution. So if at the end of the contract, you guys find somebody there locally that wants to do the directing or the pointing elsewhere. Uh, you guys can continue to use the camera system, you own it. Uh, you own all of your content, so all of your archives, you guys always own that as copyrighted by the county. We never own that. If at the end of the contract, you guys decide to go elsewhere, we'll provide all of that content back to you guys on an external hard drive that you provide to us.
Have you got any questions? Now, one of the things Natasha, that y'all didn't have until we started talking to you in the last few months. Is you, you didn't have the names in the minutes, the clerks for some of the counties were having to actually go in and, and keep up with who was saying. Whatever, like that paragraph where it's got my name in front of it, then-
Absolutely.
Y'all worked that out as a request that we made, or it was not going to help our county clerk, because it was still going to happen.
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Yep, and actually there's others now that are asking for this feature, so you guys kind of, uh, invented the, uh, the wheel there for us, so we appreciate that.
Okay.
It's great.
Alright, so the thirty thousand sixty-three forty-three plus the hundred and ninety on the, uh, and I think, does it have closed caption also, right?
It does.
Okay, so if somebody needs a closed caption at home, then that would be a feature too.
Correct, so the closed captioning would look like this, you would have captions over. It is closed captioning, so you can turn it on and off as opposed to open captions, so, um, if your residents do prefer to have that captioning on, they can certainly select that.
Well, the main thing that we were trying to do is get something that would transcribe the minutes, so the clerk would be able to, be able to do other things instead of sitting for three, three days listening to tapes and trying to transcribe all this, so that was the main feature. If we didn't have that, then it was not going to be as beneficial for us. But, uh, so that's, that's the main thing that we were after. Uh, but I'm, I'm looking at it, in case somebody's got a question on the thirty thousand sixty-three forty-three. That's, I mean, one employee's going to be between fifty and sixty thousand. So that's, that's going to free up an employee that can do other things, and that would be like half the, the cost of what, on an annual basis.
So we're going to get rid of that employee?
No, I'm just saying that, uh, that would help as far as them not having to do that as task or grow in the clerk's office. It would just, it would free up somebody to do other things in the clerk's office.
Not sure if you guys are getting, you know, more public information requests, but I know a lot of, a lot of cities in Texas and counties are. You know, as they're continuing to grow in size and population, um, so that definitely frees up some time to hopefully, you know, address and ward the, those types of things and the things that are going on in the county clerk office.
Mark, did you want to comment or? This was something that you kind of requested, so that's what we were, that's what we were pursuing.
So, just for information purposes, so our current system that we have is a one-channel mic, and I, I'm not a transcriptionist by any stretch of the imagination, but, uh, I've been transcribing the minutes since I lost an employee to the, to another office. Uh, coming up on the weekends, ideally, somebody in my office transcribes the minutes, and then I go back and proofread it. Because I'm signing off on it too, saying that I have read and agreed to these minutes. Uh, it is a difficult system to type from in that we have one channel, and unfortunately, I can't separate out Commissioner Dixon from Commissioner Memm's. And if there's multiple people talking, which there is, if, if you ever get a chance, go, go listen, listen to the video. Or I can give you the audio, and it's, it's quite difficult to type when there's multiple people talking at once. And I know in the heat of the moment, you don't realize it till you go back and start trying to listen to it, and I don't have any way to separate the mics out. Um, so I would say generally, um, it takes about four times the amount of time to type it. So if we have an hour meeting, it would take four hours to type it, for a person to type it, and then go back and proofread it. Um, but that's, that's just a guess, again, I'm not a transcriptionist, I'm not a, a typing specialist. I try to do the best I can with, with the resources that I have, but anybody have any questions?
So with this system, if it comes back printed to you, you're still going to want to listen to it and proof it and the whole bit? Cause you're not going to sign off on, on just what's delivered to you, right?
That's correct, I would hate to sign off on something and not, not read it, that's, that's the whole purpose. So yes, I would definitely want to, to, to listen to it again.
But you'll be able to listen to it on their audio side of it as far as not, not what we got now, so would it be less confusing for you to, to kind of interpret what actually was said or?
I, I would think so, yes sir, because like I say, we've got, it's, it's actually two-channel, one-audio, one-video system. Um, and so I'm presuming that it's going to be a lot more clear with, with their camera system setup than what I have now. But at the time, when, when, when the county clerk's office budget purchased this, this, um, recording system is basically the, the most inexpensive system that we could get. Because we were trying to get off of the cassette tapes, at the time we could only buy a two-pack at each time, and, and so that, I mean, it just got to where we couldn't buy tapes. It was outdated, so we had to, we had to do something, and so that was the most inexpensive thing to do. And honestly, you know, the, the meetings, uh, have increased exponentially, uh, this year compared to what they have in the years past.
Yes, did you find this company, or is it somebody, have you looked into any of the options, or what are, where are we at with that?
So it's been a few months, we did, I did go out and look at, look at other companies. This seems to be, um, from what we've gathered, the best there is out there that's offered. There's, I mean, there's obviously other companies that, that are out there doing this, but this seemed to be the one that offered the best scenario as far as the minute part of it. I mean, there's other parts in this, obviously, the cameras, that doesn't really have anything to do with me, mine is the minutes itself.
Yeah, here's the record, so, uh, I think this is from Ms. Haley?
Yes sir.
Okay, so y'all will come in and install, if we were to choose you, your own monitoring system, and it will consist of three more cameras. Uh, three different cameras in different areas, along with a recording system for the clerk and everything that's going to be to the right of our bench.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit of equipment, it's, it's three cameras that would replace the existing cameras. Um, we also have a couple of recording devices, we like redundancy in our system. And so if one recording device were to fail, we want to make sure that we have a backup recording. And there's actually a third level of redundancy, should you guys decide to use it. It's a little MNESD part that comes with the system, and you can hit start at the beginning of the meeting and stop at the end. Um, that would give us a third layer of recording, and also a local recording, should you guys want to have that, just in case. Um, so there's, there's lots of layers of redundancy built into it. Um, the system is also engineered, designed to, let's just say we lose internet connectivity, which is extremely rare in this day and age. But if technology, right, things can happen, um, somebody puts a line up or something, and if that were to happen, the system is intuitive. And it would, we would go to a wide shot of the meeting, and so we get a stop like on a podium shot. And then once we've resumed internet connectivity, we'd be able to, you know, control the cameras again. Um, now, that is to be said for any solution you go with, if you, if you lose internet, you lose your live stream, period, right? That's with any system, not just ours. Uh, but it is a very smart system, um, we have over four hundred and fifty installed across the United States. The largest one is up in Yellinife, Canada, it's up in the Northwest Territories. Uh, so it's ten hour flight plane, if we ever thought we'd have to go back on-site, we never would have installed that system, that was ten years ago. It's a very party system, once it's installed, we typically never do have to come back on-site. Uh, we have an invested interest, we're not just an AV provider, obviously we're providing hardware, but we're also a service provider. If we can't provide those services because the equipment's not working, then we don't get paid. So we have an invested interest, you're not having to sit there and wait for an AV vendor to come on-site to fix your system. We want to fix your system right away if something's wrong with it. So a lot of benefits, a lot of perks to it, but just alone in the state of Texas, we have over two hundred of these systems installed. Across cities, counties, and school districts. Texas Health and Human Services, large state agency, has five of these camera systems. We control all their meetings, over three hundred meetings a year for them. So a very popular system is, is my point, and a very party system, to my knowledge, if not another company that does what we do.
I know with the conference, I talked to one company that I saw that they had video, and I asked them about the transcription, because that was the main thing. And they said, well, we can't do it, but we could use Swag It, which, their Swag It.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would, they would have to be using their, their system, so.
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
I think my office uses minutes a lot, if not daily.
We also provide twenty-four scientific support, so we're around the clock. Because we're working on meetings across the United States in different time zones, we're at our office, there's six thirty-five, one seventy-five in Dallas, all through the night. So we're available to, to help, and we've got all eyes on it, so it's, it's a really nice test of true solution. I think you guys will really benefit a lot from it, the public will as well.
That customer support is included in the annual fee, not the, not an added fee, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to make a comment that, I mean, this system seems very sophisticated, and it looks good to me because I, my office searches minutes weekly, daily, a lot. Just to make sure, you know, we're doing what the court's wishes are, and the search function, um, you know, the video, looking back, and you can click on the minutes and, you know, it'll take you right there to it, I mean, it just, it looks, it looks a lot better than what we currently have, a lot more functional. Sorry, Mark.
And I know there's been times we had to reboot over here, before we started a meeting.
Today was one of those days.
Yeah, you had to reboot again.
Yes.
And this is actually already budgeted in FY twenty-four's budget in Capitol Atleti.
That, that was one of the items that we did specifically put in. And this would be, Natasha, y'all talked about, if we're able to get the agreement confirmed that y'all can have us, hopefully up and running by January?
Yes sir.
And payment wouldn't be due until January, correct?
That's correct, we can't invoice you guys if we haven't delivered services or hardware or anything, so we don't invoice until everything's been installed and we're up and running services.
So, Judge, book on payment, could you break down initial first payment? Would it be the forty-seven, seven, six, nine, twenty-eight, plus the associated fees of one ninety? Or would it be the forty-seven, seven, six, nine, uh, twenty-eight, plus the thirty thousand and the one ninety?
Well, for the, for the first year, it's going to be the forty-seven, seven, sixty-nine, twenty-five, is that twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, that would be for the setup, that would be installed, and everything set up.
And then you'll pay the thirty.
And then, and that fee is just a one-time fee, and the thirty, sixty-three, forty-three would be the annual reoccurring fee.
But is that going to be broke down in monthly payments, that's what he's asking, or does he have to be it all upfront?
That would be all upfront, wouldn't it?
It would, yeah, we would go, I mean, we can bill this monthly if we want, but this would be the one-time upfront, once we're installed, so that would most likely be in January. And then, once the system is, is we're running the meetings and everything, that month of January, you would receive an invoice for the thirty, or we break it out monthly. Whatever you prefer.
Thank you.
And then the one ninety would be added to the thirty thousand ones?
Uh, the one ninety wouldn't really come into play, that, that's only if we were to go over our captioning hours, and, um, yeah.
Okay.
But initially in January, we're giving you seventy-seven grand for this. With those two, yes, yes, thank you.
And that's the next year, it'll only be thirty again, will it?
Yes.
You got it.
Yes sir.
Okay.
My twelve hundred a meeting.
Yes sir.
Works out, be it roughly if you got twenty-five minutes.
Got any more questions? Alright Natasha, thank you, I appreciate you.
Appreciate your time, hope everyone, thank you so much.
Okay, bye-bye. The whole purpose for looking at this was for the county clerk, because we talked about it months ago, and, so, just trying to help them transcribe the minute, minutes, so. What do y'all think?
Well, when I said get rid of an employee, I'm not far getting rid of employees, I was just wondering, but I don't have to do it, you know, so, but twelve hundred dollars a meeting, that seems pretty steep, in my opinion, but that's just me.
That's kind of why I asked him to look at any of the options, I don't know if that, I mean, that's the only thing we've been, you know, given, so.
Right, but I don't guess there is any.
I'm like you, the twelve hundred dollars a meeting is quite a bit, but, but you know, I mean, it's just looking at the time, it's saving him, I don't know, you know, if he's spending four hours a day. Uh, or, you know, whatever he's doing.
uh, or, you know, whatever he's doing. I don't know what he, what he's actually doing. If, I don't think he's spending all week on it, you know? And you're spending twenty-four hundred dollars a month.
He said four hours was for a one hour.
For an one-hour meeting.
Our meetings are usually more than an hour.
Well, uh, I like to look into it myself and just see what else is out there. Not saying by listening to her, she says there's not, and see if this, I mean, it looks like a good program, looks like it'd be helpful all around the county as far as people searching minutes. I've been typing a word. I think that'd be very helpful. But before I make a decision today, I'd like to look in, make sure everything's covered, that we're not missing something.
And this thing would be posted on our website, right? Just whenever they wanna go to it to watch it. I mean, that's where, now they're having to go to YouTube or something, right?
Yeah, it would be embedded. So it'd be like.
Yeah.
Anything posted on our website, even a document, it would be embedded in our website, so.
So you said, um, Megan, that this would be coming out of capital outlay or would this come?
This is, this would come out of capital outlay the first time.
Okay.
The first year.
What about the other one? Would it be like?
Contract services or it would be somewhere else on the budget, because it would not be capitalized after the first year initial setup.
So then, I want to ask another question, just to be, is this specifically something that the clerk is requesting? And if it is, could it be something come out of like the technology fund or is it not?
They don't have money. I don't think he has money enough for that. There's not mu- that much money in technology fund. I would have to look exactly how much there is to cover this.
The reason why I was saying that if it was technology fund, it's those funds of his that we basically just approve the budget, but, I mean, it's for his discretion to spend, so.
I mean, but the first initial, it's in the budget for twenty-four that the court passed, specifically listed, minute trans- minute transcription system.
And how much did we put in there?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand? Okay.
Yeah, that was, we budgeted, we'd been talking to them for a long time. And then trying to, Mar- Marcus approached me about his system and, and so I asked him to look. Uh, I, at the conferences, I know he's been talking to people and I, I tried to bounce it off some of the other judges. I talked to actually the county judge in Conroe, they're Montgomery County, so at the conferences, a couple of times, and they liked their system, so.
The recurring after the initial year, the first year, that could come out of county records management preservation, because I mean, that's, it's records. Um, there is, I mean, for next year, there's sixty-six thousand in there. So after twenty-four and it's paid for out of the general fund, then twenty-five and further, it could, it could come out of this if we had the money every year. You know, if we, you know, use it, there'll be less money the next year and the next year.
So clerk, if this was something that, as I said, they'd come back later and talk about, would this be? Is this something that if the court came back later and wanted to grant you this, would you be willing to pay this out of your technology fund?
He is not over this one. This is, the Court, Commissioner's Court is strictly over this one.
Okay.
This is not the county clerk's.
Okay.
Yeah, the only funds I have are the records archive, county clerk.
No, that answers.
This is county records management preservation.
I thought this was something that your department was basically needing to help better your job and your situation over there.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just felt like it'd be a budget out, or the thirty thousand.
Yes, sir.
It'd just be a budget item every year.
Yes, sir.
So. I'm just trying to help, Mark. That's all. I T's been, did you wanna say something too?
Uh, this was not a project that I T started or anything like that, but I did want to just point out, uh, and it's up to you guys whether this is something worth paying for, obviously, but the feature that specifically links text to video is something that they've got the corner on. And that's something that sets them apart, because I did reach out to, um, uh, Ford A V and ask them if they do something similar. And they do transcription, uh, and they have some A I that they use and makes it real handy. But when we showed them what Granicus does, they said, wow, that's not something we can do. We have a different flavor. And if Commissioner Dixon, you say, hey, if you wanna go out and look for something, I can tell you with almost a hundred percent certainty that the specific feature of having text tied to a video, so that if you search the word water, you can hit the word water and it'll take you to that video where they said water, that's something to have a corner on. Now, again, whether that's something that's worth paying for, that's, you know, not my deal, that's y'all's. But I just wanted to point out that that, that's something very specific to them.
Because we did virtual, I was on a virtual call along with some other people on the Ford A V. And we talked about that along with some other things, so.
Right.
That was, that was what we got back, is they just, they couldn't do it like this company can, so.
Well, it's quite a bit of money for us to do. Uh, Montgomery County do it. I know they got several million people in their county. But, I mean, it's something I'd like to look into. I'm like, uh, Commissioner Hill says, I think it's just gonna be a little steep for me just to jump on it today. So I'll make a motion, we table it today and give a little time to look at it.
I mean, we, we can pass it.
Thank you.
If that's what the court wants to do.
That'd be fine.
Okay. So we pass on item number nine. Item number ten is consider to take action on approving the quote and authorizing the county judge to sign the contract with E C X Technology for I T Support Services. Did you want to address that, Megan?
Uh, yes. So we sent the quote that the Commissioner's Court approved to three companies and E C X is the only one that sent us a quote back.
You only, you only got one return?
Yeah.
Quote, yes.
That was just on the effort of trying to get the quotes back in there. I'd like to pass on that again today. I would, uh, like to reach out to the company that we were working with. Y'all put some stipulations when I was going into the, uh, um, what am I trying to say there? The SOC two, you know, into our policy. And the company that we had, we were working with was not SOC two qualified, you know, as far as already been approved by it. So they did not have time. They refused to bid because they weren't SOC two, you know, qualified for it. So they never been asked for that. So they said they would have needed more time. They only had a few days to do it, so.
Okay.
And I'm, if I'm.
I think that was clarified in the quote, because.
It was clarified in the quote.
Let, let me say this, okay? We weren't sharing information between the quote, anybody quoting.
Mm-hmm.
Or their pricing. And the other thing was, is if one of them asked a question, then we sent the, correct? If I'm wrong, we, the, the direction was, if somebody asks a question, just like in the bid process, uh, for the auditor's office. If they did that, then you sent the question and the answer back to all three that were in the, that were notified in the quote, correct?
And it was brought up about the SOC two compliance. And we actually said in the response that that would just be used as something that would, we could gauge the, if they could not perform that action. It could be a, used as a gauge for how we were going to look at, um, the qualifications and, 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 so really, actually, it was just, we changed the way we were. Because if, if they couldn't do SOC two, we wasn't gonna, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a recommendation, but I think they took it that if they weren't SOC two, you know, uh, qualified, I guess, for, you know, as far as they'd had that, uh, part of it, they couldn't, you know, it would basically do them no good, you know, so. That was why they was, you know, just.
Well, I don't know that E C X had, had a SOC two report.
Yeah, that's another thing I was gonna ask. Did they have that?
No, they didn't. E C X didn't.
We didn't know if any of them had a SOC two. What if they had?
Well, I talked to several and some of them did. I've reached out to some others and some did, some didn't. Some said that they don't need it, uh, if they weren't actually storing on the cloud, that it wasn't a requirement. You know, and I said, well, I see that it doesn't show that it is a requirement. It's kind of a recommendation. So, you know, reaching out to a couple of more companies, they said, yes, they did it just because they just thought that it was an extra precaution that, you know, they could set themselves up for. But the one company we were dealing with just taking it the way that they looked at it, that they weren't SOC two, so they was wasting their time and our time until then, so.
Well, the SOC two was not a requirement. So it, it, and that was answered. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure why we're going, we're wanting to pass on it. Everybody was notified it was not a requirement. And evidently, you didn't get any responses, anybody was SOC two, right?
No.
So we didn't eliminate anybody from the quotes.
So we got an original quote then from the one that we presented, then we could use that just as well then. I mean, it's because, I mean, basically, are y'all just on the quote, because I wasn't here, you know, to see that, what y'all did whenever y'all passed it. But I mean, I read it, looked, but it was basically for hourly support more than anything, right?
Hourly support, uh, from ten to twenty hours, depending on what, uh, what we were, where we were, what we were de team, determining was gonna be the need for the projects, we're gonna, it was all gonna be dependent on how many projects we could get through and how many projects we, uh, felt like we were kinda, if we were gonna have a lull.
What was their total for? Was it four thousand?
It was the setup fee, uh, E C X, uh, the, and then, uh, ten hours was, uh, four thousand five hundred dollars. And then if we were looking at twenty hours worth of support, it was six thousand.
I think the setup fee was twenty-two fifty and then the monthly was twenty-two fifty.
Yeah, I don't understand why they had it different on, uh, on the, on the first, uh, the, uh, twenty hours, they actually lowered that and it was two thousand dollars instead of twenty-two fifty. Uh.
Well, Mike, I have a question. So, uh, I believe it was, uh, it was the owner, uh, Mister Willis, I believe is his name?
Over E C X?
The guy who y'all brought in, he spoke, the one that was right here at the table where Texas, I think he stated that, um, when we were talking and going back and forth and everybody was asking questions and pinpointing all the information and stuff, y'all would need it to be suitable to work, get everything done the way it needs to be done. I think he even kinda stated that you would need more than ten or twenty hours.
He said that, uh, uh.
Uh, that should be in our minutes, because he did state that, that to be sufficient with no problems, like, uh, you're gonna have problems, but that may not be enough support. I think those were his words.
And I don't remember that. I'd have to, we'd have to go back and remember.
You may need more hours upfront than you do later on, just to address some of the problems. So, I guess that's why they bid ten hours and then they bid or quoted the other fee, which would be more hours.
Well, RFQ. You, uh, the RFQ, we were saying ten to twenty hours startups, a- as a startup. Just see how, how many projects we get through, how many things we could get moving with. That's what. And that's what E C X was saying, and I don't know, if you only use fifteen minutes or you only use ten minutes. Um, they charge per the minutes that they're doing it. When I do outside sort, uh, you know, they call me up for fifteen minutes and I have it done in fifteen minutes, I'm gonna bill them for an hour, because they stuff, they, 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 it's every fifteen minutes, I'm sorry. So if they work ten minutes, then they charge us the fifteen minutes.
Yeah, fifty-minute increment.
It's essentially, it's a, it's on average, if you use less in one month than you utilize those hours in the next one. So it was an average. It wasn't just a set ten, ten hours or a set twenty.
So if I call them up for, um, like, say, hey, I need help with L D A P, or if I need help with, uh, this one server's giving me problems, they'll, they'll get on there, uh, with me, um, and they'll go through, because they're big on training, uh, to make sure that we, sometimes I just need to be able to go through some, you know, higher functions with them. Uh, and if I can get it and they can train me how to not have to mess with getting them to, to help again, then they're more than willing to do it. There's a couple of companies that are that way.
Well, excuse me, after your twenty hours, when you get to hour twenty-one, how do they charge you if needed?
They charge, uh, according to what I've been told, they said that they would charge by the hour.
They think it was like two, it's around two something, two ninety, something.
Two hu- it's like. Two twenty-five and two hundred. I just didn't know if you went.
Two hundred flat.
Two hundred dollars an hour.
An hour.
But I, that's what I thought. It's still gonna be two hundred when you went over the twenty.
If you go over.
Yeah, that's all I was asking is where to use.
Yes, that was what I was told, that it would be, if we went over, it'd be the standard rate, the two hundred dollars flat fee.
But you will pay for the twenty whether you use it or not.
We will, we will, yeah. If you choose that, hey, we only wanna start with ten, see how everything goes, we can start with the ten and it would be the two twenty-five an hour. Um, if we said twenty hours i- is what we're planning, then, then we'd two hundred.
They knocked it to two hundred, so it's four thousand.
I think whenever they spoke, when they were in court last time, they said they would, they had companies that, you know, they didn't need to use the, the twenty hours that month, so they had something else going on that was bigger the next month, so then they'd use forty. It was just that counties typically like to pay it monthly, and that's why they broke it out, they, we, the bill monthly, every month. I think that's what they said, right?
Yeah, I remember, I remember he talked about that.
But it need to be in the contract some way or something.
Project that was coming up, they could, we could just kinda, kinda use those hours, lock those hours together.
But it need to be in the contract some way to say that that would be, you know, flipped over if they don't use the hours, that it would add up or whatever it does, if they could move to the next month.
Then you, oh, in the, in the contract.
Hearsay he said, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, I'd like to see that in writing for sure. Megan, was this, uh, RFQ put out on something or did we just send it to three separate companies?
We just sent it to the three separate companies that y'all approved in court. I mean, this is just an informal.
This was, yeah, just an RFQ process. If we, if we went out for an R F P, it would kinda, it would open it up for others if.
And that was like I said in the last court, you know, we didn't have to put it in the paper. That costs money and time. It was very informal.
I mean, we went through the process. Everybody had an even shot. We got one quote, so.
I just don't know that it was clear to, you know, the one group we worked with, Kenneth and I, working with Synergy, they just, their, their statement was that they basically could not bid it because of the SOC two. So I don't know where the misinterpretation come in and what happened, but.
You got the email?
I have represented from there here today, but, you know, he's.
I did not print that one out. I can pull it up and.
Okay.
So personally, I'd like to reach out to them again and see what they can do on an hourly basis, if that's a possibility with them. Just to have some comparison.
I'm not sure why we're trying to be oriented to one vendor. The quote went out evenly to all of those vendors and we got one quote.
Well, I don't understand.
Everybody was even handed.
That's right, but they did that, but I still, they, I mean, you got the letter from.
I haven't talked, since we left that last meeting, I haven't talked to not one vendor. I'm not talking to vendors. I'm letting the vendors, we put the quote out, we're making sure everybody's addressed the same. If they had a question, everybody got the same question and the same answer sent to them. So everything was on even keel. I have not had a conversation and I've told I T not to, not to go in and have a bunch of conversations. With any of these vendors, they hadn't had access to any of our stuff. We wa- we waited for the quote, we got the quote, we got one quote. Why are we not willing to go and do with, go with the quote that we have right here? Because I have no personal stake in this.
I have no personal stake and I have not contacted one of them myself. I only read the letter that was given to me, why that the company did not bid the proposal because of that one issue in the deal. So that was what I'm saying. And now then they're saying it's not even necessary, so.
Bid the proposal because of that one issue in the deal, so that was what I'm saying, and now then they're saying it's not even necessary, so.
Can you find it?
I can find it, the, the, the request, the um, the final letter that we got. From uh, Denise got um, from Kenny Price. But I cannot find the response.
But you sent the email to everybody.
Correct.
That it was not required.
I tru- I, I treated it just like an RFQ process, everything went through, uh, everything went through Denise and I did do the response, so.
Well, let me ask you a question, what do y'all need, ten hours or twenty hours?
I like the twenty hours, but I mean. Twenty to how, how much projects we could get done.
Cause we still have things dealing with, in fact. I don't know, on this issue with N code, with Sheriff's Department, but we trying to do some things with Tyler Tech. Hopefully somebody can help us with, so.
Oh, and we've also got the new twenty twenty-four upgrade that just got thrown on our laps.
So.
That we're gonna have to upgrade the justice program from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. And that was a, the uh, they're sunsetting the twenty nineteen version. Um, as I believe uh, February or March of next year.
And it's in the budget for this, correct?
Correct.
And either, either one of those ten hours or twenty hours?
Either one of those, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, that we accept the quote from ECX uh, Systems for twenty hours. A month for uh. The setup fee or the onboarding fee of twenty-two fifty and then the uh, monthly support of uh, twenty-two fifty. I think that comes out on the monthly part, twenty-seven thousand, I had figured it out somewhere. Was that right, Megan?
Yearly, you said monthly.
The, on the recurring monthly, it's twenty-seven thousand, correct?
Not monthly.
Monthly?
No, I mean, I'm sorry, if you're looking at the monthly fee, it adds up to twelve months, twenty-seven thousand.
Didn't y'all say the twenty-two fifty, that was not?
No, it should be. It should be six thousand.
That would be forty-eight for the twenty.
It's the second quote.
Yeah, okay, that'd be forty-eight thousand a year, that's in the budget.
And then this onboarding is for the twenty hours a month is two hun- is two thousand dollars, so it's six thousand. The setup fee is two thousand and then the monthly recurring cost would be four thousand, according to this quote.
Yeah, it shouldn't be over six, Greg.
But the, after the first month, the second month, it'll be uh, four thousand.
Yeah, but before you make the motion, just.
My question to Mike and Tex. I mean, I listened to an advisor out there, somebody who does this daily, and he said for a county our size. With manpower we had, he wasn't saying anything bad about you two or nothing, he just said for all of the users we had online. With three guys servicing, which is two and a half basically. He thought we could have used more hours than that. Now you're telling us that twenty hours would be sufficient, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Well, and, okay, so, but what we're using any of these companies for? I mean, we're not, give it, we're not, we're not bringing them in to like, like offset, like if we were having. Um, another company come in, okay, we need uh, two more people here, you know, for a week. We're not using them for that. Uh, what we're using them for is if we have specific questions, hey. We need help, this server's doing exactly this, it's not, the, the vendor's telling us it's not supposed to be doing that. So can we get some help going and looking at? Deep dive into say, um, the logs and some of the uh, functionality to make sure that. Um, I'll just use Mark's office, CoFile. CoFile has been slow. Since pretty much the entire time that we've had it um, in Mark's office. We don't know why, because the vendor says they're not having any other people that have had problems with this. And we've looked at all the logs on our side, we can't figure out where the break is. So we would be using ECX or Synergy or whoever, we would use them to actually go in. And see if they can figure out what logs, where we can find the break and, and how to find the break. Um, that's the, what we use them for. Now. Would that cost, go ahead and take forty hours, forty hours a week, uh, I mean, forty hours a month, I, I. I don't know the answer to that, and again, we might have to readdress this later on. Um, a- and, and uh, for your statement, yes.
That defines my gray area, that defines my gray area.
It's less than two hours a month, you know what I'm saying, it's support at the twenty hours.
Well, twenty hours per month. Um, i- if we were to break that down twenty i- i- in per week, um, that's uh, you know. Five, five hours, five hours a week. Um, but again, um, most of the time, we're. Still working on our regular stuff, but we're trying to get through. Some of the base things, then utilize another company to kinda help us out with some of the higher functions and then, then we're during a week. We won't, we won't see that, we might need more than that, yes, I will agree. Um, but again, this is a good starting point, and that's kinda why we brought it up, it's, let's start it out with ten, twenty hours, see how everything goes.
My question was just to see, I wanna make sure y'all have said sufficiently what you needed to be successful.
All right, well, my motion is we accept the quote from ECX and I'll use quote number. It's QT dash fifty-two for six thousand dollars annually for the twenty hours a month.
It's four thousand a month.
Four thousand a month.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I was looking at that top figure.
Yeah.
All right, so four thousand dollars a month, twenty hours, QT fifty-two.
Right, okay.
But there's setup fee with that?
Sorry?
Is there a setup fee with that?
Two thousand.
That is the setup fee, it's the two thousand at the top.
And then four thousand a month.
Probably fifty thousand in all.
But that is a budget due to mail, that's in our budget right now.
Correct.
And for next.
Yes, we put that in.
All right, that's my motion, do I have a second? All right, I guess it dies for lack of a second. Item number eleven, consider to take action on a quote from Calvary Construction. For a hallway door into the Lord's, uh, second floor district courtroom, uh, for security purposes. We've been working on this for a while, back when we started on the Frankston Annex and uh. Of course, they're doing, only do so many projects at a time, and they've got other projects that they're doing for the community. But uh, one of the things that was kind of a holdup was trying to. And talking to Sue over there, we were trying to get a larger door going in hallway, so. Uh, you've got a quote for eighty-nine forty for the wall and the door, uh, one of the things that. Because the door's thirty-six inch, then uh. I, I just wanna make sure that we don't do something that's violating fire code, so I'm, I'm asking that the court. Approve the quote to go ahead and do this, contingent on the fact that we're not, you know, I'm checking with fire. I talked to State Fire Marshal's office and also uh. They, they said that they have to come do an inspection. Uh, I sent them pictures of the hallway and the courtroom and all, and so. I just, I just don't want us to do something and put that wall up and then we're. In violation of State Fire Code for the number of people that we got in that courtroom, and it's like. There's sixteen benches with about eight on each bench, and then there's some chairs that you can sit in there, so. Just talking, checking with, based upon how many they'd had in there, it's like maybe a hundred and seventy.
How wide is that hallway right now?
About five foot, six, you know.
Well, it's about the, you know, the two swinging doors?
Yeah.
I had Sue measure that when I was trying to get the quote, when the guy was coming over, and it's forty-eight inches, so what we were trying to do. She said, I'd like to have a forty-eight inch door, so that way we got the same space to be able to pass through. Well, forty-eight inch door, to build it where it looks like the quarter and all them other doors. Is gonna have to take a whole lot more bracing in that hallway, so a lot more construction, it was gonna cost several thousand dollars more to do all that. Okay, so uh, we went back to the thirty-six inch door, so. Because that was gonna be.
Thirty-six inch door with about a five foot walk and it's where to be.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's gonna be your square inches there as to how many people can get in and out of that room, so the. That's what the fire marshal will look at immediately.
Yeah, the thirty-six square inches you got, how many people are in there, he would tell you immediately.
With a four foot door, that's what we were thinking, two people could kinda get down the hall at the same time. But not sure with thirty-six, I just don't want us to violate fire.
And they make a forty-eight, I mean, he could order a forty-eight inch door, if that's be the case to match it, but that's.
Yeah, that, that forty-eight inch door is gonna cost, I, I don't even want, with all the bracing though, about another eight thousand dollars added to the quote, or something like that.
Really?
I'm serious, yeah.
But for safety w- but for safety wise, if they.
But I mean, it should, I just would think it would hang off the same, you know, header and everything it's got there, but it might not, I don't know how much more it weighs.
The door.
You have to make sure that.
Twelve inch more door.
A uh, gurney still gets through there too, right?
Well, I went to the EMS and I measured the gurneys.
Yes, sir.
And the gurneys are about twenty-five to twenty-six inches wide.
Thirty-six should be a big enough door.
Yeah, you can get the gurney.
I guess it's just gonna be the square.
Metal detector, the metal detector, the gurney can go through the metal detector, I wanted to make sure that too.
How wide is it, you know?
I had it written down back a while back, but I'm, I'm not sure, Joe, it was, it was a little wider than what I thought it was.
Right, well, I, if the fire marshal approves it and says that that's enough exit point for every, how many people in that room, I don't have a problem with it, which.
And I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to approve the quote, I wanted the court to approve the quote, quote is contingent on the fact that we don't violate fire code, that's all. Do you wanna speak to that sheriff?
That's one of the things I wanted to weigh in on is.
Okay.
Definitely, um, it's an item of security, so it falls in the purview of the sheriff and uh, we wanna improve that security there, uh.
I would think that'd be an easy fix to put that in the door.
I just didn't know if it was in there already or not.
Yeah, just be a peephole, look through it.
A good one.
No, when, when I talk to district judges, they just basically wanted the door with the walls.
They, they want some security.
Understand.
Yes, sir, and issues of security are the responsibility of the sheriff.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Have you taken time to look at any other options of?
On this, on this, I've talked to uh, our administrative uh, Judge, Judge Davis, and I agree with him, we, we need this. I wanna see it happen, I just wanna make sure we file fi- follow fire code. And we don't have them throttling from forty-eight inches down to thirty-six and creating a problem, all it would take is one person. Or a walker, uh, one person in a wheelchair or uh, something uh, limited mobility and then we start having problems.
But that way, there's one other exit out of courtroom behind the bench.
You'd be behind the bench.
Going behind the bench, yes.
So we, we are talking.
See, that's the one I thought at first, when I took office and this conversation started, that's the one I thought, because protecting the judges, but. That was not the case, that one's not supposed to be, according, according to what the judge told me.
Yeah, they, they want that other one just to harden the target, if something happens, can we lock it down? Can we uh, shelter in place, protect the people that are there, we might have a full gallery. Uh, jury panel or something, could be as many as a hundred people, so.
But would you like to take time to look at the option of a four foot door?
I, 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 I'd like to find out if we're gonna comply with the uh, fire code first, and if we're not, then, then move forward.
Okay, but I mean, even the possibility of looking at that four foot door, if that's the case with the fire marshal, and he says that to funnel it down from four to three could cause a problem.
I- if, if it's his recommendation that that's probably not in our best interest, then I would say we, let's pass on it and approve a four foot door.
I can tell you that I had a quote, cause that's what kinda gets sticker shocky, I think eighteen thousand. For a four foot, just add a four foot door.
Anything that's non-standard, obviously.
Same, was that same?
The bracing in the walls and everything else, it's gonna have to go there.
Is that same company? Same company, give us that?
Yep, same.
Maybe wanna reach out and see if you can find somebody else here that, you know, there's other options and see what, get some more quotes.
I think we've had good luck with this company on projects in uh, Anderson County already. Um, and, and with our project that's coming up with them, it's just whether or not this is a fire issue or safety issue caused by that.
So I think what we should do is listen to the recommendation of State Fire, Fire Department first, as you said.
Well, he asked me to get with the local fire marshal and see what he said first and then get back with him.
Okay.
Good.
And they'll do that inspection for us, I'm sure, they're, they're licensed to do all of that.
Make sure that door has a big enough visibility so y'all can see down that hall.
Or some methodology, whe- whether it's uh, the peephole, it allows you to see it like a, a fish eye, so that you can see both sides of the hallway, just through the little hole. Uh, I never saw the specs, but, and if that's not the case, then the camera systems that we're talking about, uh, they might have to be, be uh. Relocated where the cameras are to adequately cover that hallway.
Essentially, the, the door was supposed to be like the one right across the hall. I mean, that's what we showed them when they went over there and started taking their measurements, cause that's what the judges wanted on this side. So essentially, it's the same thing. The only thing we'd add is trying to get a four foot door, that's the only thing.
Yeah, yeah, there, on that other side of the hallway, we'd be moving a couple of judges at a time, we wouldn't have a problem with that, but. Obviously, we could have as many as a hundred people trying, trying to get out of that door in an emergency, so we, we wanna make sure that we're up to code.
That was my only concern, I mean. So I'm, I'm just asking the court if y'all can, if y'all wanna go ahead and approve this quote and if something comes back with. Whether, we got a fire code problem, I can bring it back to the court, but if not, we can go ahead and get this done.
Approve a contention on that inspection by the fire.
Fine with you, Sheriff.
I believe so, sir.
Okay, along with the visibility.
Yeah, we, we can get that added in there.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're, we're talking about, put something where they can see through the, from the one side of the door.
Yeah, security.
So just see who's on the outside. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the quote from Calvary Construction, eight thousand nine hundred uh, forty dollars. To in, uh, install a door and wall with all the. Finish out all the trim to as close as possible, Mexico courthouse in that second floor entrance into the district courtroom. Uh, contingent on being uh, compliant with the fire, fire codes and getting, getting that answer. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mems, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Sure.
All right, item number twelve, uh, consider to take action on vendor quotes for replacement of the courtroom. Security camera system in uh, the Anderson County courthouse, so. Back in, back in May, uh. Tex uh, made me aware that the camera system in the courthouse was not functioning a hundred percent like it's supposed to, some of it's functioning. But some of the equipment needs to be replaced and things like that, and so. We started looking at vendors and talking to vendors, I think that Fercotta approached the, appro-. We hadn't really contacted at that point, but Fercotta approached the IT department, is that right, Tex? Okay, all right, so that's a yes, so I know that uh. One meeting was Fercotta, I think the sheriff and Nick sit down with them, with IT, I couldn't be in it, cause I was in another meeting. And then uh, but then we had a virtual meeting with Fercotta, which uh, they had some really. I guess some things that they could provide, and I don't wanna get into it because of the security issue. So, and we don't need to discuss some of the actual items, but they had uh, some, some nice. Options that went with their camera system, that helped the Sheriff's Department be able to monitor the security in the courthouse. So we did a virtual meeting with them and I know. So we did a virtual meeting with them and I know sheriff for you on that part, that first, first. I know there was one where y'all did that I wasn't there, so, uh.
We wound up doing two virtual meetings.
Two virtual, okay. But I was on one of them. And I liked the, a, a lot of the, the things that they could provide, and I think y'all did too. And then, uh, then we. Got some, uh, well, had some virtual meetings and some meetings with Ford AV, correct?
That's correct.
And they've got some, some, uh, things that they can provide, uh, also with their camera system. So, one of the, one of the main things is, is all I've heard for the last months. Is let's replace the camera system. So, I wanted to go out for quotes. And, uh, and so that's why we quoted this, but it was just to replace the cameras. And we wanted to make sure that both companies were quoting the exact same number of cameras. In the same, the very apples to apples, basically. So we sent out the quotes and, uh. So the courts were, uh, we did not, some of this stuff is proprietary. So we did not share even with the vendors who the other vendors were. Uh, that would be quoting on this. We didn't share their cost, we didn't share any of their, uh, equipment, so. But we had diagrams of the courthouse on all the floors, showing where the, uh, cameras were. Uh, I think you got to do a walkthrough with Ford AV.
With Ford.
I know I did with Ver- Verkata, I was tied up, I couldn't do the, the one with Ford AV. But essentially, we were showing them where, so they got a chance to come in and see where the cameras were at in the courthouse. And then there was on, on the Lacy side, there's two cameras there. One camera was gonna be taken down and used and replaced with another, an additional camera inside. And maybe one more camera. So everybody's quoting apples to apples. So when we went out with a quote. Then unfortunately, the sales rep on Friday changed for Ford AV. Okay, and we got notice of that just a little before lunch sometime in the morning. And so we're trying to get Ford AV to give us a quote. They said they were gonna give us a quote. We didn't, we were supposed to get it on Thursday. We already had Verkata, but we were working out some network issues. And some engineering issues with their engineer, uh, on how it's gonna affect our network with Verkata. So we finally got those questions answered, what, right before noon on Friday? Okay, and then we finally got a quote, what was supposed to be a quote from Ford AV at three o'clock. It's nothing but an estimate, it's not a quote. And so, we're, that's, that's kinda where we're at, okay? So, I know the sheriff is wanting to try to add, uh, extra, uh. Options, maybe some other cameras, which I, I'm not opposed to, but we were doing that stuff as an add-on, okay? We wanted to try to get what we got working again. And that's what we looked at in the budget process. Of just replacing what's in, in the courthouse now and getting that system up and running. And then the other thing is to, if they wanna do some add-ons with cameras or other, other type of, uh, options, then we can. But, uh, anyway, we have, so we essentially got one quote from Verkata. And it's less than what the estimate is for Ford AV, quite considerably less. Y'all should have copies of that, do you?
I don't have, I don't have any of that security stuff.
Hang on.
You know, bar mine, it's a hundred and twenty-one pages.
Yeah, that's Ford AV, wasn't it?
No, that's Verkata.
Verkata, okay. I sent, I sent you the reduced version and I sent you the, uh.
Well, I, I can tell you that, uh, Verkata's, uh, kinda the industry standard out there. We did a little independent research. We've gone to vendor shows, uh, at conference and also talked to users in the field. And Verkata would be my choice if, if you ask me amongst the vendors out there. Uh, my problem on this is that, uh, as the judge pointed out. Verkata came and did a walkthrough, but I, nobody from the sheriff's office was involved, so I'm not sure what all it covers and. Uh, wh- what, what we're gonna get with that, uh, as far as security wise. Because I know from doing the walkthrough with Ford, uh, AV and, uh, with Tex. We have some hallways that are going to courtrooms now that weren't originally courtrooms when they built that, that we don't have cameras in. Courtrooms are one of the high probability areas that we need to provide security for. And I don't wanna have any hallways or courtrooms that access to those courtrooms that are not covered. So even though this is something we really need to get, uh, done, um, and even though we only have one bid on it. I would ask the court to, uh, pass on this to give us time to go through this hundred twenty-one pages. And do a walkthrough over there ourselves and make sure that the county is getting the best deal possible for security purposes that we can.
Now, one of the benefits of Verkata that, that we noticed on without giving up proprietary security information. Is that, um, and to be fair, Ford AV has a similar benefit. But they have the, the ability to bit, to combine, um, access control. With the, uh, video surveillance system. So basically, a dispatcher can open particular doors for officers if they've locked the courthouse down. So that the officers can get there. Additionally, Ford AV, um, they have good product. Sheriff and I looked at it, but there's, there's a few things that, that are problems for us. One, in order to view that remotely, you have to have a proprietary app, uh, in order to view the video remotely. And if we got a highway patrol that happens to be coming through from Crockett to somewhere else. When we have a problem at the courthouse and it's an all hands on deck. Then we wanna be able to push that out to anybody with a cell phone number so that they can see that live video feed. And know where the problem is to be able to go there. So, you know, that said, yeah, um, I think the sheriff. Um, I, I certainly concur with him if we, uh, can table this or pass on it rather until we can get a little more time to study on it.
You brought a point about being able to open doors, uh, what will we have to do to have them type of locks on the doors?
We're, and that's something, that's another phase of the project.
That would be like project one, project two, we'll get all the camera stuff in the bids process that the, the judge and them engaged in. But that's what they can bring to the table in the future to continue the project, to make the courthouse more secure and more. Uh, securable when we have to respond. We can lock down certain areas and protect them better. That would be a second project with site surveys and, and proposals and big documents to bring in front of, front of you guys.
So I, I think either one of them was, were. We sent, uh, an email out to see if, make sure both of them can add features later.
Yes.
Like controlled access, other cameras, and the, the que- question was asked, and they both answered yes, correct? Okay, so, uh. There's a concern and, and you've heard it too, just like I have, with the district judges about the security of the courts.
Yes, sir.
So my, my, my first response during the budget process was to get everything we got over there right now replaced. And so that's, and that we've got, uh, we've got some ARPA money for IT. That we can use for that, that purpose. But I don't wanna exhaust all that fund, and if we can do this in phases and try to go through the budget process, I don't have a problem with that.
Right, I agree.
I mean, we look, we look years ago at trying to do some kinda controlled access like we have on this building. Over there, and at the time, it just, and this was like two thousand, two thousand one. Because everybody was just using the key and then somebody leaves their key for somebody or loses their key, then you got a problem. So, I understand those issues. It's just that we need to, I wanna get this done. So the district judges don't think we're dragging our feet on trying to get at least some camera systems in there to help y'all on the security side.
Absolutely. I've spoken to Judge Davis about this. He understands the need to get it done as, as well as I do and, and. But in, uh, our hesitation to ask y'all to table it a little bit. While we look at this hundred twenty-page document to figure out if we're getting all the coverage from the cameras that we need. Uh, particularly with us using different parts of the courthouse that weren't even courtrooms in the past. And there's, as we did our walkthrough the other day, we realized some of those had no cameras in those hallways. Those are gonna be the areas of, of highest, uh, the probability and emotion over there where we're gonna have an issue. It's what we're having court, either criminal or civil. Just, uh, enough time for us to work our way through this is what I'm asking.
I mean, I don't have a problem with, with, with delaying it. I just don't want district judges think that. We're, we're delaying, we're delaying trying to get what we got replaced, yeah.
Uh, Judge Davis knows, he, he, he's carrying the message to the other judges.
Sheriff, that was my biggest concern, is we've been dealing with this since May. So, I just wanted to make sure we had a system that works, that at least y'all have access, y'all can access the system. And see what we got at least existing.
Well, judging all fairness, Tex and I started dealing with this in twenty-one, I think. Uh, before we first figured out that you couldn't, uh, dial in to one of the, uh.
We, yeah, we, we recognized some problems in the first year of my administration, started seeing that we would have to address this. It's, uh, unfortunately, none of us are good at predicting failure. We didn't under- we didn't predict that, uh, when that camera system over there was gonna start to fail catastrophically. But I'd like the time to, uh, examine this hundred twenty-page document and make sure we have the coverage we need to do the security judgment. Uh, has promised the district judges that we'll get.
Well, I think it'd be good for y'all to look at it, cause like I said, the. The traffic in the courthouse has changed probably in some areas that some cameras might have been needed then, it might not be necessary now, but definitely. Probably there's some new cameras that need to be added.
And that's what we want, a little bit of time to study on it.
If we need to do an RFP, we do an RFP. And it could be phased, that, we could do it in phases or something on an RFP. For multi-comp.
Well, it just makes.
Even, I mean, it, we've got security companies here.
It just makes sense to, if we're gonna do an install with the cameras. Um, even if it's the same number of cameras with different placement, get the whole install done at one time instead of paying another trip fee to give them back.
That was my input on that one.
If y'all wanna pass on it, then, uh, uh, whatever.
Well, it says here, you know, they're subject to charge if they're putting in the new CAT five cable. If it's new cameras, it's definitely gonna have to have new cables, so.
If there's, uh, additional camera placement that wasn't called for in that bid, there, there'll be a change in the bid, yes.
Yeah, so that would be nice to know.
We'll know for sure once we work our way through that, that larger document and do a walkthrough over there. And if we, if we decide that there's anything that we want to address. Then, uh, we'll work with the county judge to make sure that that is reflected accurately so that y'all know exactly. How we're spending the county's money and we're getting the best bang for the bill.
And the, and the ones that we were talking about, CAT fives already, the wiring.
Yes.
That was the, that was the, we were replacing mostly cameras.
Yes.
With, with some of the options to be able to control it from a remote area.
Yes.
Or be able to, for them to be able to see it from the computer, okay? Is, is that what the court wants to do then, pass on it from now on then?
That'll be fine.
That's good with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, item number thirteen, consider to take action on the bid previously awarded to Capitol Elevators at a regular meeting on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. For modernization of the elevator for the Agar Life Building, decide next plan of action. Megan, did you wanna address that?
Yes, sir. Um, on August fourteenth, the court authorized me to send a letter. To Capitol Elevator because we've not heard anything from them and. I did, it was certified mail, we did receive the card back, so he did get it and I have not received any type of response from him. So, in that letter, I indicated that if there was no response, then that was indication that he is forfeiting his bid award. So, um, I'm just letting the court know, I didn't know, uh, what y'all wanted to do ne- what y'all wanted to do next. If y'all wanted to look at, at the other two companies or. If they would be willing to still do the project.
And, and let me say this, to give the court options, okay, cause now we got some roof issues. I had it on the agenda and tha- and this is, I'm not saying this is what we need to do or we have to do. I'm trying, I was trying to give the commissioners an options of, a way to do this so that without it being on the agenda, I, I couldn't, uh. We couldn't take, take it up. So, what I'm, uh, item number fifteen, and I was gonna, we might need to. Address item number fourteen in with this one here, but I was trying to see if the court wanted to take. And engage an architect to do, just do a study of the building and give us some kinda, help us make sure everything. That we got on, that, that everything's up to speed and everything's prepared and. But, I mean, I've got. I've got the architects and, and the roof's leaking. I've got, I've got a PowerPoint if y'all wanna kinda. Combine all three of these, so you got all the information before you try to make a final decision on anything, is that okay? Y'all arrive with that? Can we just go on and combine thirteen, fourteen, fifteen?
And that's just to let them go and just kinda do an inspection of the building?
What?
See what?
Well, what I was gonna do, let me show y'all what happened on the roof. Cause I got a phone call and I had to go over there and, and we got, uh, we got two leaks. Let me just make sure everybody's up to speed. Is it up on the screen up there? Okay, went too far with it. Do I need to drag that to the right?
Might turn the light off and see. There you go.
I should have put it on, that's where I messed up. Let me put it on slideshow. Before I bring it over. I just. Yeah, there we go. All right, so this, this happened on October the fifth, we had another one, uh, late September when it started looking at it. Uh, this is, if you look, you've got, you've got fall on the, uh. There's fall from the building down where the sidewalk is all the way to the street. So you got some elevation that's taking care of the water there. So this, this side, it doesn't seem to be an issue. On the, uh. As far as the doors, cause we got a problem with the other door on the other end of the building, and then we got a problem with the roof, so. And of course, this is the other end where the door's got a problem. This is the, the south side of the building. And, uh, I'll show you some pictures here. This is still on October fifth. These are pictures and stuff that Steve Sheehan, uh, made. They went over with me to look at the building, see what was wrong. So, essentially what we had is, what'd you say, about sixty thousand pounds of water on the roof? Cause I climbed the ladder too and. You got, most of the roof is covered in water and the drains are stopped up, so. Uh. This is another, from another angle. This is a potential leak down on the s- uh, on the curb, uh, right above, let's see, right above where that drain is. This is inside, in the, uh, training room. Uh, right above where the, the gutter and the drain are. Now, this is one that Steve took on the fifth. I've got other pictures from the September date. This is essentially what he was gonna propose, but he's got a proposal. I just was using his pictures. Instead of having to go take more. This is when I went over, uh. I guess Jen or Truman called and said we got a water leak, so. Water was going underneath the door, and if you look, it's very flat right in there, uh, on that sidewalk. And the waters, when it rains really hard, the water's going underneath the door. And there's a crack right i- inside the door where it's running down the wall into the basement, right there, foot of the stairwell, you'll see that in a minute. So. There's, there's the water underneath the floor mat. After, after it quit raining, so that, that appears to be where the water's running down in that, that, that floor there. And you can see the ceiling tiles are, are wet there. Then, where this drain is at on the, uh, south side of the building. then, uh, tha, that's where it's draining into the training room. There's the ceiling tiles, uh, that got wet on that September, uh, date. You can see the, see if I can get the mouth. You can see the water on both sides of the ladder there, uh, actually the wall, if you look at it, the wall's starting to get discolored. You can see it right to the left of that table, it's faint, but you can see the wall being discolored with the water running down the wall. So we're getting water down there. This is the north side of the building, and, uh, we didn't see any necessary leaks inside the building from this one. But this is the cutouts with the drain, if you can look at the window, that water's coming out in, uh, into the drain, and then even after the debris was moved away from the drain, then that water was going into that window too, and I'm, I'm worried about the caulking or something. At some point down the road, it may end up causing even more leaks on that fir, first floor wall. That's all the debris that was on top of the building stopping up the drains. And so essentially, and I'm gonna let Steve address it, I got your drawing in here if you want. Steve Shad with the garment company, they're the ones putting the roof on the courthouse, so.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Thanks for the time.
So what we did is, uh, kinda looked at the building and, uh, why is the roof causing a problem, what's, what's the kind of overall issues of it? Um, right now you have a roof that's, it's a structural T concrete deck, uh, which is really good, cause the amount of water you have on it, if you had a metal deck, you'd have some serious problems. Um, so the deck is just not sloped, uh, well enough to get the water off. Um, you had some, so what we're proposing here is to basically go back to the start of it, and let's build up, um, the roof. There's not equipment on it, so you got a great open structure, which is, uh, super helpful for flow. Let's build it all up, the north, uh, side of your building, you don't have any access as far as doors and people coming in and out. So we can, uh, build up the one side, get it to monolithically slope all the way to the back and put gutters in. Um, you're gonna eliminate no water coming into the building, you're gonna eliminate it not being around from the doors. Um, so you're gonna have a system that is set up nice, and no matter what you put on, what type of roof, when you build in that insulation and that barrier, in fifteen years, or twenty years, or thirty years, when that roof's no good anymore, you can rip that top layer off, all that structural slope's gonna be in there still in the ISO, and you can come back and go again. So, this is, uh, it's a good solid building, I mean, they just, honestly, they do not build buildings like this with all the T, uh, structural concrete. I mean, it's a, that's gotta be the strongest building you have in the county. I mean, it's, cause it's, it's got a basement on it, I don't know if it's in the plans for emergency, you know, shelter in place kinda building or whatever, but it's the perfect kinda building for that, cause it's, it's basically built like a concrete bunker. Um, so it's super, super strong, uh, but that's what we suggest, is basically fix the structural issue, and then whatever you do, basically from that point on, you can just, you can just rinse and repeat, and you won't really have to mess with that again. Um, the nice thing is you won't have any internal gutters, no water will be coming down through pipes into the building, everything will be draining outside, you won't have any of those issues, so, uh, Judge, I don't know if you could flip, um, to your next slide, if you have that, I got some handouts if, if you don't have them.
The next slide is gonna be, I just added, we talked about trying to address that front door.
Yeah, so two things there, we wanna seal underneath the door, um, but with that slope being into the building, it's always gonna have some kinda water just as the rain comes down that way, so if we put an awning over that door as well, you can kinda keep that direct water going in, reseal it, and keep that water tight, so we've kinda looked at all the issues, um, to make sure, uh, you know, we don't, hey, you don't spend a money, much money on the roof and you had an issue at the door, we're kinda looking at the whole building to make sure that we're watertight.
That, that was all the slides.
That's it, okay, great, I'll hand out.
Yeah, I was trying to just.
Let me just skip most of these pages then, I'll just hand out a couple of these, um.
Late in the afternoon.
Okay. Here, so we can hear you.
While, while he's passing us out. We were looking in part of the complaints, there is the sun and late in the afternoon is cooking everybody, and it's warming it up to a real high temperature. If we extend an awning out there and take care of the rainwater coming down, it'll also be able to shake that. So I think that's something real critical in this. And Stephen alluded to it, if you take the price to rebuild this building today, uh, with a basement in it, you're probably looking anywhere from four to six hundred dollars a square foot. If you multiply your square footage, uh, you've got a very valuable wood building here, and you spend a little money on the roof, you're far ahead. It's a very good building.
I was told after we purchased that building, with that bunker and that basement, everything in there, that was more value than what we paid for it, like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Structurally, that building is.
It's completely concrete.
Gary, since we're kinda talking about thirteen through fifteen, what we were talking about is y'all maybe overseeing, trying to get everything fixed, get us up to code, and not have to worry about this anymore.
I think one of the issues gonna come up is now that you're spending money on it, you've gotta go back and look at all the codes and making sure that you're, when this building was built, and if, we hadn't talked about this, and I hadn't talked to the architects about it, but being that is a basement, is there a second way out of that basement? Now we're having to come up with a method to get people out in case there is a problem. So that's something, code-wise, there's other areas that need to be looked at.
What did you see on the, the down, the down story leak is coming from the parking lot?
So if you, can you flip back, it's easier.
Yeah.
Big screen here.
Hold on. Which one you wanna?
Uh, keep going. Couple, couple more.
The inside.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, here.
Right there.
Yeah, so this, if you go back, Jen, so this in your sheet, it's picture, uh, top picture, middle, and then to the right in there. So that's on the inside, what you have there is you have a concrete slab that's poured into your building, uh, which is your con, which is your sidewalk.
And what has happened is the waterproofing layer in that section is, not only your roof is leaking problems, cause you flooded the roof, but you have that sidewalk, and so, um, that sidewalk, that middle picture, it's actually cracked, and they've come through and they've tried to just, you know, basically seal over the top of it, what we need to do is we're gonna detail that out, uh, basically saw cut it, and we need to reseal, and that's, that's in here as well, we're gonna reseal that entire joint. So that, not only are you gonna fix the roof piece, but we gotta fix that waterproofing below, um, because right now water is, it's, it, when it rains, it's basically hitting that joint, and it's not, if it's not just perfectly tight, it's just little water constantly, and so you're just having a steady drip down in the basement.
Um, which is. It's coming from there.
It's coming from there.
It's not caulked it and it's stopped.
Yeah, it's coming from there, and it's coming from, uh, and then obviously your roof is just saturated, it's just holding water. Um, yeah. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
I mean, that's the problem there, it's in the ground, you know, it's where it's coming through the wall.
Definitely.
You crawl up in there, look, and that seam right there, you see the water coming through the seam of the wall, not coming off the roof, it's coming from that cracked area in that concrete.
Correct, that's where you're having one of the leaks.
Be dug up, saw out.
So I, I didn't get a copy, is that?
Oh, here you go.
Is there a quote with that?
There's, there's kinda three different options.
Okay.
Uh, to look at, and all of these.
Um, three different options to look at, so kinda put together a good, better, best, obviously you gotta address the slope and all the roof and all the waterproofing, everything's got the waterproofing, all the joints, um, that are leaking in the concrete, um, awning as well as budgeted in there. You can go kind of a basic fifteen-year, fifteen-year option, hey, get you in the dry, it's gonna be, it's gonna last you a long, long time. Um, a, a good option, but you're gonna spend most of your money in your labor and getting your paper fix, you're gonna spend very little on actually good waterproofing.
Is this including that awning?
Correct. Includes that awning.
That's in there.
Yeah, then you kinda go all the way to a, a twenty-year system, you know, very good vapor barrier, lot of waterproofing there. Thirty-year, that's kinda exactly what you did on the courthouse, same type of system. Don't really recommend that here, not the type of building, you know, this building may be in the county twenty-five years from now, it may not be. So, you know, probably wouldn't spend that thirty, forty-year money like you do on a courthouse, that's obviously gonna be here another hundred years. Uh, so I would recommend kinda looking more at the fifteen-year option, get you in good waterproofing, if it is still in the county, we'll get this slope correct. If you need to do something then, fifteen years down the road, like I said, you can peel that off, you're still gonna have a lot of good slope in there and redo it. Um, so I would kinda lean towards, that's my recommendation, is to kinda lean more towards the fifteen-year. Again, these are all just budget numbers, what we take from here, uh, if the, uh, commissioners are, you know, willing to invest some of the money in there, then we go out and get the bids. Right, we go out and get three bids, just like we did on the courthouse, uh, make sure everybody's up to code, bonding, insurance, uh, the whole deal. So that's, um, just wanna make sure we answer everybody's questions, and we appreciate the Commissioner's time.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody got any question?
Of course, the other one is the elevator, so if we engage an architect to do this and like oversee trying to do the elevator, we, if we go back and, whatever y'all wanna do, uh, that's, that's up to the court on that, but, uh, if we wanna rescind that other motion with Capitol Elevator, and then if the court wants to, uh, either engage an architect or ask me to contact Otis, they were the only ones that were turning key, to see if they'll still honor their bid, then I'm just, I'm throwing options out here, y'all tell me what you wanna do. I, I just wanted to make sure we had, we didn't just have to make one decision, cause you got some variables there, so I'm just trying to give y'all some options, see what you thought.
The price for the architect, sixteen thousand dollars, is that a set fee for the little?
It, it's six, I talked to Wayne on the phone, it's sixteen thousand, and then for the roof, okay, that would be for the roof. And then, uh, and then anything else with the building was eight percent, did you get a copy of that?
I've got it on the file.
Extra.
Okay. Anything else would be eight percent.
Eight percent?
Yes. But that should be on the second page of that.
And what we do on that eight percent is we go back, as soon as the scope is defined, we'll give you a fixed price on, on that. But to start out with, we do the eight percent.
I'm sorry, Gary.
What we usually do on a project that is not a full scope, nobody really has a grasp for what all is needed, we come in and, and we do, uh, a study, and we use the eight percent on the fee. But once we define the project, we'll, we'll go back and give you a fixed fee. And it, it's always works out to everybody's advantage, because we're just kinda, till we get the bids in and we understand the scope of the work, we don't have anything to tie fee to, so we just use eight percent factor. It's kinda, uh, it's really, uh, to your advantage to, to do, approach it this way. And we do this on most of the projects we work in, public work.
If we don't make pictures, you can go and turn the lights back on.
Kill it.
Judge, if I can, I'll add one more thing, something, something needs to be done with the roof, now whether that's, you know, full action to it, or you're making maintenance guys up there after every rain get their roofs, but it just can't hold that kinda water constantly, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna have a big problem eventually, so.
It's a built-up roof, and it, it's really, for it to work properly, it needs to get rid of the water. It's not built to be a swimming pool where it just sits there and holds water, cause the water's gonna find a way to go somewhere eventually. And it's, and the rocks, if you go up there and look, the, the roof itself is in bad shape. So, uh, you've got small leaks now, sooner or later, it's gonna be a good work.
Stayed full of water, okay, and it would run over the edge of the lip. So we had them cut the two holes in it and put those drains on it, because it stayed full of water all the time. But the water problem comes from the ground and from in front of that door. So far, it hasn't come through, but that's why it's got relief that it's got, cause the drains do not work.
It had interior drains.
Two of them.
Two of them, and, and they, they were, they were covered up.
Yeah, less than two inch.
Yes, and they cut the holes in the side of the parapet to let the water spill.
Where those drains come up at, outside, under the parking lot, because originally, if you look at the picture of the building, there was not a drive-through on there. Then when they put the drive-through, they covered it up with the concrete.
Yeah.
So that's why the.
Defeated their purpose.
That's right. So then they defeated that, you know, part of the drains, and why we covered the drains up and cut the holes inside to get the water off, which you see it would be levelful.
Right.
But those big concrete pillars held up that weight, you know, of that building sitting on top of itself.
Yeah, it's got a good system because it's a double T concrete, like it is on bridges and everything else.
But it needs some way to shed the water.
Yeah, it has to get out there eventually.
Too flat, and the, the gravel's gone, you know, there's nothing, but it's not leaking through there yet, or hasn't.
Well, it's not in the front area where the concrete, it's leaking there at the concrete, but there are other leaks in the building. Not that concrete slab issue that's coming from the street, that's a big issue, but there are other.
Where's the other ones at?
Uh, if you walk in, so if you walk in from the back, if you look to the stairwell side, right there, coming down.
Yeah, Rand, did you check, see if that's from there, other windows, you know, the windows really need to be recalled, cause they got a flat surface.
That's all in here, that's all covered, full, full building, cause we're gonna, any window joints that are open, reseal all of those, cause there's no point in putting that roof on if you don't waterproof it as well.
One of the good parts about this roof is it doesn't have any penetrations, you know, we're not having to deal with curbs and all of that, that, that's another set of problems. You know, if it had air conditioning units and big vents, you'd have more places for the water to, to infiltrate.
And just like we did on the courthouse, it is, you know, it's a budget, I always try to be a little high, you know, just on the, on the courtroom, courthouse roof, we came in underneath that, but wanna give you realistic numbers, I can't tell you, come up here and eighty grand and then come back and three bids, actually it's one forty, you know, stretch it back the other way, doesn't work well. Um, so, you know, that is, it's on the higher side, but, um, you know, I, I always wanna save you money, not, well, hey, we went this far, come up with another sixty grand and meet this ridiculous budget of, you know, eighty that I gave you originally, so, never, I never wanna do that to you.
Any other questions or whatever?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you have, son? I guess first, y'all wanna rescind that, since we got item number thirteen, y'all wanna rescind that bid that was awarded to Capitol, Capitol Elevator?
Just rescind it to all of them, is that what you're saying? To do what to?
Well, it'd just be rescinding, it was awarded to Capitol Elevator, uh, on, uh, on our regular meeting on June the twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. So I guess that's a place to start, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, rescind the bid awarded to Capitol Elevator, uh, at the regular meeting on June the twenty-six, twenty twenty-three for modernization of the elevator at the AgriLife Building. And due to failure to perform on the bid, do I have a motion?
I don't know. I don't know which direction to take.
Okay, this is just, since he failed to perform, this is just, would be a motion.
It's the insurance, uh, performance bond, I think's what it is. The last time I talked to him, you know, I thought he was, had ordered and done, you know, was on schedule with it, but he's not got the, that was what the demand was, having a performance bond, isn't that correct?
Yeah, but I sent him this letter that the court authorized me to, and he never responded.
About the eternity?
About anything. I asked him where he was on this project and I received nothing. Y'all gave him forty-five days.
What do y'all wanna do?
What do they think y'all done? I'm not sure of anything on this.
I mean, I, seems to me that was kinda cut and dried, he ain't gonna, he failed to perform, and he's not even communicating with us anymore, so. He's not gonna take and fix the elevator. I'm just asking for a motion to rescind his bid, that's all, on that, on this action of him.
Yeah, if we can reach out to him, I mean, like I said, I mean, last I talked to him, he was on go, but I don't know why he didn't respond to them, I have no idea.
When I spoke to him in July and in August, when I talked to him on the phone and I emailed him, and when I spoke to him on the phone, I said, please respond to my email that I've been, I've sent to him twice. He said that he was having trouble getting his performance bond.
Oh, me neither.
I mean, that's legally required, he has to have that per statute.
So before.
And with this letter, he still failed to respond.
So before we officially rescind it, uh, would the court be, um, allow Commissioner Chaffin to see if he can make contact with him?
After I've already emailed him twice and mailed him a certified letter?
He's not even responding anymore, is he?
No, and he received the certified letter, he signed it.
And he never signed an affidavit, like the court directed.
No.
That it was gonna be a turnkey project.
Correct.
So he, he's failed to perform in two places, based on what the court directed. So why don't we want to keep working with this guy? We wouldn't do that with anybody else, if somebody didn't bring y'all something out there on the road construction and they, they failed to perform, y'all wouldn't use them anymore unless you just had to. That's what I'm saying. What is, what is, what is so special about this guy?
The, the price, the, the.
Well, I understand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand compared to a hundred and twelve, that's exactly my special.
Well, we.
We can get in contact, you can talk to him yourself, you see. So I don't care what company it is, uh, but that would happen to be the company that give us the lower bid and. And he has done work for us, and he's done good work for us for what he's done, you know? Yeah, I. And last I talked to him, he's, acting to me, had everything on order and everything was ready to go and he was gonna get it done. I don't know why he's not responding to the emails, I don't know. Well, would you be willing to contact yourself and see? Well, I, I wouldn't want to rescind the bid, do we find out sure if he says not interested, rescind?
Let, let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question. Now, I asked the court because he was telling y'all on the telephone that he was gonna, this was gonna be a turnkey project. And y'all directed that the county auditor would get that in writing, that it was turnkey. If I, and, and I asked y'all, could I wait to sign that agreement with him until he responded and sent that letter? He's never sent the letter. And if I'd have signed that agreement, that's why I ask y'all, if I'd signed that agreement, we'd be stuck with this vendor and we would have to be supplying a whole laundry list of stuff that he said that the county would have to provide, it was not turnkey. And so, I, I mean, we wouldn't, I don't think we'd do business with anybody else like this.
I think that the contract though said it was turnkey, I thought.
It wasn't. What, what he bid was not turnkey, and the other, the other thing about it, and I, you know, I just, I figured we, we wouldn't have a problem on this. But we've sent out bids to modernize our elevator. And in the middle of it, he turns around and bids a Lula elevator, which is not modernized in the elevator. So he really did not live up to the bid that he entered, was a total different bid than what we sent out for bids on.
Also, what he bid was, it said requires the county to purchase and provide materials and labor to complete the elevator work. We don't know what that will cost.
No cost. Is that a hundred thousand, is that a hundred and fifty thousand?
No.
And so TK did the same thing, they had a laundry list, the, the next lowest bidder was two hundred and seventeen, if I remember right. And they had a laundry list of things that the county was gonna provide. The only turnkey was Otis Elevator. That was it both times. They were the only bidder on the first one, and then they were one of three bidders on the second, and they were the only ones that said turnkey. So, I mean, I've, we've been working on this elevator since the first of the year. I just want the elevator fixed, that's all I want. And I don't want to spend any more money than y'all do, but to fix it right, that's where we're at. We've got one bidder that came in here and said, this is turnkey, the rest of them are requiring us to provide other stuff. And there's no telling what that cost could be. If, if you went with TK, that's two hundred and seventeen thousand, and whatever they're requesting more, it could be, it could be over two hundred and sixty-two thousand, it could be over fifty, sixty thousand dollars. We don't know what that cost is, it's unknown. I just want the elevator fixed, I'm tired of fussing about it. Uh, that's, that's, my only goal is to fix an elevator, so it works in a building that we've invested in. We're looking at a roof now, I'm just asking, let's, let's get together and, and fixes so our extension office can function like y'all planned it to be. That's all I'm asking. So, I mean, I, I made my wits in.
Okay, well, I'll contact him.
So we're gonna contact somebody that's not performing and not even communicating with us?
Before I rescind the bid, I'd like to hear his explanation. I can rescind the bid next, uh, meeting. That's right, to the next one, we'll see what he does.
So y'all want to pass on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, consider take action on a quote from Garland Company for Roof Repairs. Uh, y'all got a quote there for a hundred and seventy thousand for the, for the roof? I, I mean, I don't know what y'all want to do about the roof.
I'd like to do the same on that, I'd like to see about some local companies that could fix that roof, because that's not gonna be something as challenging as the big courthouse. You know, what we went through, and I think we ought to give them some local shots and let them look and see, because there's several very reputable companies here close that would probably like to look at that. And see what the options, then there's other options, the same as what we done on, um, seven, what is it, seven oh eight, the building.
Mall of three oh six.
Put a shed roof on it, you know, just anything, I mean, just see what the other options are.
See what, okay.
Mm-hmm.
See if there's any other options and, uh.
Well, I mean, they could put a metal roof on it, you know what I mean? And then, you know, I don't know how many years that would last, but that's what we did over at the, the storage buildings, where we got the files.
So do we want an architect to help us on at least the design or what, or assess the building?
If we do, I'd still like to look at a local, just to.
I, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, we can go out for bids or whatever y'all want to do, if, if that's, I just put this on here. So y'all had options, I don't like a leaking building or a leaking roof.
That's right.
And, and it's getting damaged, and I don't want the walls and the carpet being destroyed, it's brand new stuff.
Yeah, the carpet is definitely, you know, it's just squares, we can come up in squares, but it's still, you know, it's, don't need to be damaged in the wall.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have to go out for bids for that, we could just look at local ones and see it, and professional services, so.
Okay, so you want to pass on item number fourteen?
Yes, sir.
Is that what the court wants to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. So what about item number fifteen? Related to a retainer and an architect?
I'm reading.
So I guess, I guess we're gonna pass on that one too?
Yeah, it's the same way, I just would like to look at some locals, just to be able to, because business professional services, we can pick one.
Okay.
Do it, without having to go out, RPs on it.
Alright, we'll pass on item number fifteen. Item number sixteen, consider take action on approved professional services fee proposal with DRG Architects, so I assume we're gonna pass that one too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider any action, uh, necessary action to fulfill the terms of the county jail medical contract with Southern Health Partners, uh, requiring wifi and entrance to county jail. IT, the, IT, uh, identified that there may be some questions on getting some things answered through jail commission, just make sure we comply with jail standards. I wanted to ask some questions, Sheriff, do we, does our phone, inmate phone system, NCIC?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I was trying to find some solutions on this. And since Gary and them were architects on our jail, then I asked him a question. He thinks NCIC might be somebody that can put in the wifi in the jail. Is that something maybe y'all could contact?
I don't know if they offer that as an individual service, but I was going to mention today that, appreciate you sending me that email, I got a chance to read everything and look at it. And I distilled it down to two things is, uh, particularly, it was from Mike, his, his attachment, that y'all are in full understanding, we need that in the county jail. And then he says, neither myself nor my crew qualified to make sure the standards are up to code. And that's where that third party vendor comes, sometimes comes in with, with an expert. Just called NCIC the other day. We found out just asking him some questions, because we have a relationship with him. He's got wifi in seventy-two jail facilities, fourteen more under contract fixing to go in. The sheriff in Athens, uh, was putting one in last week, and Brian Beaver's up in Kaufman's had it for years. So there, there's not a federal problem, there's not a local problem, there's not a jail commission problem. It's, it's just, you know, having the right code, security and other things like that. And we probably need to go with somebody that is in the business of the jail. I, I think your recommendation is good, I don't know if he offers that as a single service or not though.
NCI offers to, to put in wifi in jails when they do it, uh, to facilitate the use of their tablets that are, that are handheld tablets for the inmates to use in the jail. At this time, we're actually not considering using tablets in the jail, uh, for that purpose. Plus, we would really, uh, we would really appreciate having our own system in there, not some, but something that belongs to a third party vendor, because our, um, body cameras in the jail will also use that same, uh, wifi to upload the videos from the body cameras when they're all put into service. So, we, we'd like to maintain the security on our system ourselves, rather than have a third party contractor maintain it for us. Like NCIC, and I'm not sure.
What's your suggestion, or what's, what's the solution, or suggestion that y'all got?
Well, when Mike and I had talked about it, um, last year, exactly, it actually was the first time. You know, when we spoke about it, he said, I don't think it'll be insurmountable. Um, you know, it's, it's not a huge issue, or didn't make it sound like it was a huge issue anyway. So, and that, I was left with the understanding that the cost would just be, you know, three, four, five thousand dollars. And I wasn't concerned with that, I, you know, I'll find that in my budget somewhere to, to fund it. Uh, but, you know, realistically, if that has changed, you know, somewhere along the line for the hardware, then I'm not aware of it. As far as running cable, um, it was our understanding that when the sheriff supported that third person MIT, that that would be some of their function, was to do things like that. That upper mezzanine, several of the commissioners have been up there. That upper mezzanine is big enough for me to stand up in and walk to carry cable from one place to another.
Be wide open.
Yeah, and there's a twelve by twelve hole cut in the roof of the closet that has all the, excuse me, all the electronics in there, up front. So running wires is not, not really, running cables is not really an issue.
I think that my main concern is.
Come up here, while I pick you up on my.
Yeah.
I think my main concern with this is the, uh, if the wifi pucks were to not be secured correctly. I didn't think about that in, in our original talks.
Okay.
And the, the, if the wifi pucks were to be dislodged, I know we got failed on a couple of things for our local jail here in this building because we didn't have the bolts on the right side of the actual housings on several things um, to secure those kind of, I know, I know, know what the jail standards are on the hallways.
Here is our.
And that's kind of why I wanted some, an outside company or something in order to, to, to fulfill some of these needs. I mean, yes, the.
Certainly understand that, we're not asking for any wifi to be available inside a cell. It'll all be in secure areas of the jail, out in the hallways. Um, because I don't care if the inmates have wifi or not, the sheriff, sheriff's not concerned with that.
They don't have access to.
No, no.
The sheriff is concerned that the medical staff that needs all access to wifi, so that they can see where their patients are, to give them their medication and treat them, um, have access to it in a timely manner. Go ahead, Sheriff, I see you trying to speak.
As they make their rounds, they're taking their cart, they're taking their meds, they're taking other things, and they're charting all these services that we're providing already, but they're creating a permanent record of it. Almost weekly, I get three or four, uh, emails from jail commission about complaints that are written by inmates, and you know how that is. The commission has to send everything back to us, and we go to our permanent records and answer them usually within twenty-four hours and, and get it resolved, but that's because we have good record keeping and, and good documentation. And this goes further in that with our medical care, we're paying a lot of money for medical care, and they'll do even a better job of charting and documenting that stuff, so that we have no issues.
So what are they doing now with it then, whatever they do?
They have to get everything ready, go out there, make notes while they're running around, come back, transfer those notes to their system to create the records in the office, where if they had their tablet, they would be doing this while they're treating each patient, going down just, and, you know, hey, I, I tripped the other day and I cut myself.
It wasn't more.
Put a band-aid on it, it's charted. Everything they do.
Because if they forget to document that for whatever their notes are, then it's a.
It becomes a problem.
Because we put wifi, I'm just gonna question you, but we put wifi in there, who else is gonna have access to that?
He started, uh, to talk about that a while ago, and I, I wasn't sure if we had really explained that to you. The, uh, body cameras, car cameras, that system that y'all funded. Uh, he was mentioning that earlier, the jail, jail staff are also gonna have body cameras. That will go to, uh, upload, as they, they create videos, they upload, uh, wireless to the system.
Our server over here.
So do our deputies, you know, the same thing. And that creates, uh, any use of force we have, anybody that's injured while we're talking to them. If we're walking down the hallway, there may slips on a, you know, wet floor, and it's captured on our body camera. It's gonna become very, very important to us to have that documentation, have it secured for our risk management and, you know, we start dealing with our lawyers over the injuries.
To speak to your question though, Judge, nobody has access to it other than the folks that need to be logged into it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be for the medical service and for our deputy's body cameras.
And the deputy's body, deputies won't even know what the password is to the wifi, because IT will, um, I'm sure push that password out into their device.
Yeah, all that'll be in the device, they, it's not active, it's passive, after it records, you get uploads.
So it'll get pushed into their device so that it'll just automatically upload. I would actually be, uh, opposed, as I'm sure the sheriff would, to, um, giving wifi credentials to our jailers, because I don't want them on their personal phone when they're in there, I want them working.
I, I don't want them distracted, no.
The only thing that I was just making sure that I, that everybody knew, I, I want to make, I want to make sure that, that any jail standards, even in the hallways, the unsecured, I just want to make sure that that's all covered beforehand.
And you gotta put what we put in, I don't want somebody to be able to make a weapon out of it.
Yeah.
Well, they, they won't have any access to whatsoever, and I'll get a letter from jail standards, or at least an answer that says they have no, um, standard of inspection, um, on wifi service in the jail.
I mean, we can go with Rocky of what the, the antennas that we're currently using everywhere else in the county. Um, which, uh, I mean, we're using them even in the regular, uh, size of the sheriff's office. I've got two points in there, and we can go with that. Now, uh, the prices on that might be anywhere from two thousand, five thousand dollars a puck, which I did, uh, did, uh, talk to, uh, uh, Tia uh, on, I would think it was Wednesday or Thursday last week, and she was saying that roughly we're looking at, uh, one T hall and then another, uh, six halls, so you're looking at roughly around eight devices, nine devices. So that money would definitely have to be, we'd have to come up with it somewhere.
Just kind of, you know, we didn't realize that in that contract, we might do this.
Well.
You know, of course, nobody here knows what's actually in the jail, whether you got wifi or what you got. This is kind of one of those after effects.
Well, we've been working on this for several years and, uh, medical finally, you know, really just insisted on it. So we've been trying to get around to it, but they finally insisted on it, and it was timely since we needed that for the body cam uploads anyway, so.
Well, I guess we just need to have a meeting, sit down and talk about what, what's gonna have to be put in place.
Okay.
See, you know, identify where y'all gonna need these, like, see, like Mike's talking about, and talking to Tia, how many units you're gonna have to have, how it's gonna get there, and I just want to make sure we're not violating jail standards. I don't want somebody, kind of like the door, I don't want somebody to come back after the fact and give us a problem.
Oh, sure, seventy-two other sheriffs have, at, at least have, uh, already proven that it doesn't, but we'll get, we'll get something.
Okay, we'll do this as a project, and if you'll get a survey of the jail and figure out what you need them, we'll get something from the commission on. We'll do this as a project and if you'll get a survey of the jail and figure out what you need them, we'll get something from the commission on. Standard or, or whatever it is they need.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff. And so there's no real action to take on that right now. We'll pass on that one. Item number eighteen, consider to take action on purchasing fire hoods for Elco, Elkhart Volunteer Fire Department amount. Four hundred and ninety-five dollars and, uh, ninety-three cents to be paid with Opera Rescue Plan Funds Act. This is a reimbursement. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Chapeau, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number nineteen, consider to take action on reimbursement to Bradford Volunteer Fire Department. Any amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars for extrication equipment to be paid with American Rescue Plan Funds Act. And that's a reimbursement also, correct?
The first one actually wasn't a reimbursement, we're paying for it.
Oh, the first one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But this, the twenty-one thousand is a reimbursement.
That's a reimbursement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Not all entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Dixon, does that say?
Yes, fine.
Okay. All right, motion by Commissioner Dixon, second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Uh, item number twenty, is considered to take action to adopt, adopt the jury selection plan for Anderson County. In compliance with chapter sixty-two of the Texas Government Code. You should have a. Document in your, uh, packet. And, uh, Teresa asked that we take action on this and get this. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number twenty-one is considered to take action on purchase of a rapid print time and date stamp for the district clerk's office. Approximately eleven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, twenty-two cents. Megan, did you want to address that?
Yes, sir. The district clerk, um, asked if I would put this on here because she wasn't able to be here. Uh, their. File for record stamp is, the last one was purchased in two thousand and eight and the one they, she currently has, you can't rely on it to be the right time, it skips time. And, you know, dealing with. Records with attorneys and stuff, it all has to be the correct time when something's filed. So she asked, um, if the court would let her purchase this.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve. The purchase of a rapid print time and state, date stamp, uh, for the district clerk's office. Any amount of eleven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, twenty-two cents paid out of capital outlay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number twenty-two, consider to take action on additional twenty-seven, twenty-six, thirty-four. The purchase and installation of generators to Watson Springs. Water supply to be paid with American Rescue Plan Funds Act. Originally approved on November the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Megan, do you want to address that?
Yes, sir. This was, um. After the, Watson Springs got their final bill, um, it was twenty-seven, twenty-six, thirty more than what the court approved. So they asked, um, to be reimbursed for that additional amount.
Any questions about that? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number twenty-three is consider to take action on the three percent, uh, flat cola for, uh, Texas County and District Retirement System. Retirees in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. And that's, uh, what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-four, correct?
Yes, sir. I just wanted official action from the court on the specific rate.
All right.
So the rate will be thirteen point four six for next year.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapeau, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number twenty-four is consider to take action to accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Victims of Crime Act grant. Award and adopt the Voca Budget BA one-one-eight.
This is our yearly grant, uh, for, through the district, um, attorney's office. Uh, just need the court to accept the award and adopt the budget.
Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Motion back, Commissioner Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number twenty-five, consider to take action on changes to the Anderson County Personnel Policy. Megan, do you want to address that?
Yes, sir. I brought this to the court last, Commissioner's Court, and y'all stated y'all wanted to look at it, look it over before voting on it.
Everything looked good to me, but on the hazardous side of it, I'd like to take out the, uh, commissioner's, sir.
Which one do you want?
What page?
Uh, the second page.
Okay.
Where it says, um, this, you know, commissioner's secretary, uh, she's loaded, so I'm gonna take her out of that, you know, for sure.
For which part? Because it's listed several places.
Yeah, every part. I want her to just take it out.
So it'll just be the emergency management coordinator?
Yes, and you can put, move that, kind of judge, administrator, whatever, but I mean.
But it deals with, um, all the road and bridge departments.
Then leave the commissioners on it if you want to do that.
That's fine.
Yes, that'd be fine.
So the emergency management.
Commissioners and maintenance staff, anybody that's got chemicals, we're gonna have to report that to and provide. The documentation to the emergency management coordinator.
She'll keep the originals and then all this.
Put that in a three-ring binder.
Okay.
And just have it on file. But. But, but it's gonna be up to the different departments to provide them with the doc. Correct? That's what your buddy understands it?
Okay, be fine.
Okay. All right, so would that change?
Yeah, just that one change. She's got enough to do. I can handle my fire. I don't have any hazardous, but diesel. That's all.
So on A two, it'll, at the last sentence, it'll say Anderson County Commissioner's Court and Emergency Management Coordinator. Will be responsible for ensuring that the program is current and enforced.
Perfect.
So every part that says.
Commissioners, minister, assistant, just take her out of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you had a line that says that the departments will.
That's.
Provide that documentation.
But it should.
I, I think that's.
Does that cover that unless any commissioners or stuff?
Yeah, each elected official department head supervisor will be responsible for all of it. It's, it's listed throughout. I mean, it's, it's nine pages.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the personnel policies.
Was there any other question?
Well, uh, my only question was, we didn't get a chance, we don't ever see the attachments that go with these things, uh, when they come up before you. And make sure it didn't adversely impact anything with the sheriff's offices. We're the largest employer in the county with two hundred, you know, out of two hundred and some odd people, we have eighty-something.
There was, um, in the last reading, I think, that there was something that involved TikTok that's, uh, on county devices. That we were interested in. Is that along with the same policy?
It's the same one that I gave you last morning.
That is, that's the particular one. There was no allowance in that originally for any use for investigations. We've solved one case, uh, in the last six, eight months off of social media TikTok. They just prosecuted a murder in Dallas the other day where they, they, uh, had evidence obtained from TikTok. We need access to that and not be a violation of any policies.
And I think.
I think this was a required.
Okay.
I think this was required.
The governor, because of exactly what the sheriff is talking about. At first, all state agencies were required to take all, all TikTok off their devices.
Right.
And then because of exactly what he's saying, it's helped in some criminal investigations. Then they've made an exception at the state level. I would assume that that exception would extend to other local law enforcement. And I don't know that for a fact.
We would just ask that we put that exception in our personnel.
I don't have a problem with that because I think it makes sense.
And we'll regulate what, what devices it goes on. There's only a handful of our people that even have access to that on their county-owned phone.
And it would just be for criminal investigation only.
Very limited, limited actions.
And would that be like on my, on my phone? Do what now?
Would that count as like me being?
No, it's county-owned.
No, that's the ones the sheriff's department on.
County-owned phones. And I think the sheriff's office is the only one that has county-owned phones.
So they're giving you a supplement. That's your phone.
Yeah, because their people have to have theirs for criminal investigations and subject to subpoena and everything else, so. But, but, yeah, we need to make that exception.
So along lines of with the exception of law enforcement?
For investigation. For limited investigation purposes, does that sound right?
Yeah.
I'll clean that out, but that.
Yeah, maybe as, as approved by the sheriff or his designate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
I'm gonna limit the number of people that can get on there.
Yeah, I, I think that's, good, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, per, the policy changes, uh, with those amendments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number, uh, twenty-six, consider to take action on awarding a bid for precinct, uh, one road and bridge, uh, department backup. Uh, Commissioner Chapeau? Or Megan, did you want?
We received one bid. It's in your packet of John Deere two thousand and fourteen four one zero L. I don't know how you say that. Uh, it's eighty-four thousand, nine hundred. That's the one we're using.
It had to be purchased from my capital ally. My equipment.
You want to put that in form?
Yes, sir. Um.
Approve the bid, approve the bid and the purchase.
I'd like to, uh, put it in form, motion to approve the bid for the, it's eighty-four five, right?
Eighty-four, nine hundred.
The eighty-four, let me just get my.
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, as to Himes' equipment and, uh. To accept the bid and to prove us to be able to get a check, go get it. That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
And be paid for out of my company outlay.
Second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item twenty-seven, consider to take action on accepting a petition to lower the speed limit on Anderson County Road twelve thirty-one from sixty miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour. Commissioner Chapeau?
Yes, sir. Uh, I've had, they've got all the petitions filled out. I've got, I think she got everybody on the street, to be honest with you, but. Uh, she's asking it to be dropped down to thirty-five. That's the lowest we can drop it down there on, uh, twelve thirty, twelve thirty-one. Um. I think that I would like to put it in here to where we'll do. The west end of it approximately. One and a half miles, let's say two miles to be safe. That road's really, really long and it goes way into nowhere afterward, so. I'll just post it and mark it where it's thirty-five should be. Can I do that? Be halfway? So let's do the west end of it, two miles of, from the west end, from, be from, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three.
So let me ask a question on the petition. Do we have to have a hearing? Don't, in this.
Yeah, I think you do have to have.
We have to set, have to set a hearing going.
Yeah.
Thank you, right.
Because I think that's what this is for, is to accept the petition and then set a hearing.
That's a.
Do y'all know how long this?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So we could put it on the next committee?
That's right.
Y'all?
Is that what you're wanting?
Yes, sir.
And you gotta run it in the paper, so.
Just, I just make the motion, we accept the, uh, petition to do it and, and have the public hearing on it.
Okay.
And then give that to Mark.
But.
How, how long does it take to get that in the paper?
Oh.
Within a day or two?
When's the paper run?
Uh, you just get, yeah.
I think you'd have to put it in there tomorrow.
Caffeine.
Okay, we probably need to put it on our website too. Because anything advertised now, I think it's gotta be on the website too. Let me see what the next court.
But he did state that he only wants the, uh, two miles from what, from market road is that?
Three twenty-three.
Three twenty.
Three twenty-three, western, western.
Yeah, so that needs to be on his petition.
Instead of the whole thing. I mean, I'd say the whole road's seven miles.
Can't really change the petition.
Probably not.
Well, you can do, you can do a speed limit on certain part of, because I, I have one that we only have.
Okay, is this for?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, so that would be, is it part of your motion that we would have the hearing on the thirtieth of October?
That'd be fine.
At our regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I have that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Okay. Uh, item number twenty-eight, consider to take action on hiring contractor for dead tree removal for the backside of Davie Dogwood Park. I think Commissioner Hill's taking care of this one.
If y'all want to look at those pictures, I didn't make a bunch of copies because they're all in color and, uh.
I seen them.
But if you go up, uh, Link Street and take a left on Lisa Lane, you go up there and it wraps around, the Dogwood Park backs up to that neighborhood. And as you can see in those pictures, that's the man's fence and that's the Dogwood Park behind it.
Yeah, I seen them.
And there. There's a picture there, a tree fell through the fence. Couple of weeks ago, a tree fell, knocked the power line down. And it's gonna be probably a quarter of a mile long stretch and we probably need to clear from there. The residential property line, I would say at least eighty foot back into the park. Are those trees, Joe, are they, uh, traveled areas where, on our side, the park side, or can them trees just be dropped in them woods or? Yeah, yeah, no, no, there's nothing, that's just a thicket. That's what I thought. If we can just push them down and, uh. Just get somebody to throw them. Somebody to come through there, because, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of work pushing them without having the trees fall in the people's yard. There's a couple of houses that if a tree fell, it'd fall on their house, you know, so we would have to.
Can, can I, uh, can somebody access it from the park side?
They just walk in there.
You don't have to take a dozer and push something?
No, this, this gentleman here said we could come through his property and he would give us a sign, uh, written agreement saying we can come through his property. Because he's the very last house on the street. And everything goes north from here. So all we would need to is just get through his property and get in there and get started.
So a man couldn't throw them though and just leave them?
Yeah.
It's just that thicket, I mean.
I don't have more getting them out of there. Well, I think maybe if we could, uh. Get them pushed and piled and then maybe I could partner with the Forester Service to come out, burn them or something or. I just don't know about leaving them there as far as fire hazard and stuff, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I really don't know what to do, but so.
Right now, you're just asking to get bids for some, go out to look for bids?
To go out to look for bids for, for a company to come in and clear eighty-foot path behind this neighborhood. From one end of the neighborhood to the other, and I would say it's approximately a quarter of a mile long.
But just get the dead out.
No, I'd go through there and wa, get everything out.
So we, do we need to just quote, get quotes?
I guess. I mean, we don't have, the county don't have the resources, you know, the, the, the equipment and all that. I mean, you gonna have to have some.
Since you know the project, do you want to contact some people?
Oh, yeah, I can, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
You don't think this will be over fifty thousand?
Oh, yeah.
If it's gonna be over fifty, we need to bid it out.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, they won't even.
Well, then.
Two go out there two or three days.
Because I mean, if you're gonna get prices, you're gonna have to go out and get the same prices.
Let's do that. Let's just go out for bids and see where it comes back, because I'm afraid.
It's just have to draw the, the deal on it so that you, when they go out for bids, people need it.
I guess we can get some pictures from Google Maps or something.
Or we could, I could find somebody with the drone and, you know, take pictures or whatever, but. Uh, like I say, I mean, you know, and this guy with his fence, he's not concerned with his fence, but, uh. All these pictures from the same place and like this, these trees here, if they fall, I mean, they're gonna wipe out his fence and everything, you know.
So.
It's gonna have to be. A company with insurance and the whole nine yards, you know. And I just, I'm not real sure where to start with it.
Can we, can we get a diagram? Would, would you work on getting the diagram, maybe an aerial photograph, some? So, um, one of them things is how's the auditor gonna tell them the scope of the work?
Right.
Right. So maybe some way of measuring it?
Yeah, we can do that.
That's right.
I mean, I can do that on the phone.
So we need to go ahead and authorize her to go out for bids though and then provide, she's got to get that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go out for bids for, uh, dead tree removal for the back of Davie Dogwood Park. Is it, is there a street that we can kind of?
Lisa.
In, in the area of Lisa Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, for precinct four. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
And, and that's to authorize the auditor to go out for bids.
That's right.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chapeau, do I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Consider, uh, item number twenty-nine, consider to take, consider and approve, uh, payment. Consider, uh, item number twenty-nine, consider to take, consider and approve, uh, payment of three thousand, five hundred, five hundred and thirty-six dollars, thirty-six cents of cap, capital outlay to Johnson Controls for installation of a carbon monoxide, uh, monitor on the jail boilers, and this is a sheriff's item on it.
Uh, yes, sir, um, this was an item that the fire marshal requires to give us our inspection and to pass his inspection. And so therefore, without his inspection, we can't be in compliance with Texas Jail Commission rules, so it's mandatory.
Yeah, and I talked to Joe, and we're, we're having our boiler inspected, we did it at the same time, so we were trying to get everything up to, up to speed.
Yes, sir.
So we can get them both inspected, re-inspected again, so.
Yeah, this was an emergency purchase as it happened, because, uh, there wasn't time to wait on a Commissioners' meeting for it. But the reason it was thirty-five hundred dollars is because you can't just use a Walmart carbon monoxide detector, um, in the jail. This carbon monoxide detector actually, um, has sensors in it, they control valves, they shut off all the gas to the entire kitchen if it senses too much carbon monoxide. So, uh, not just the boiler.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the payment of thirty-five hundred, thirty-six dollars, thirty-six cents from capital outlay to Johnson Controls for the installation of the carbon monoxide monitor on jail boilers, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Okay, the next one's yours, too. Uh. Item number thirty, is considered to take action, authorize County Judge to accept, execute an amend, amendment to the contract with Tyler Technologies, uh, to migrate the sheriff's office from Odyssey to ENCODE Public Safety Pro at no additional cost to the county.
This was part of that original agreement, they didn't get it into the contract initially. Basically, all this does is takes the amount of money we were paying to the Odyssey section of Tyler Technology and moves that money to the ENCODE section of Tyler Technology, it's just an accounting thing on their part.
And this should help us with the NIMs and the UCR.
ENCODE should help us with NIBR's and.
That was the goal, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Item number thirty-one, consider to take action on setting a date of November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three for a public hearing and publication of notice of such hearing in a newspaper of general circulation on the creation of a reinvestment zone to be known as Anderson County Reinvestment Zone, BT Brothers and Storage LLC for purposes of tax abatement to provide economic development within the county and to take up, uh, for consideration and application for tax abatement deemed to be in due form from BT Brothers and Storage LLC. If you look in your packet, there's actually the word involved, Bob sent the wording for the motion. Uh, there's actually two motions, because item number thirty-two is gonna be the second motion to notify, uh, give notice to the other taxing entities, as we've done before. And don't let, uh, don't let me forget, we've got another one, uh, this All West was a program, I think y'all have been dealing with already, and it never went through and never went forward, so Bob made me aware of that, so we need to do them. That, I did not have time when he sent you that notice to post, uh, an addendum or add it to the agenda, so I went ahead and reposted another, so we would stay within our seventy-two hour notice. So, uh, so we have an extra agenda, so we, we don't need to adjourn before we do that, so. Uh, if somebody wants to make a motion, it's, uh, item number one, the wording there for the motion. Somebody wanna read that motion?
Uh, I move that Commissioners Court of Anderson County conduct a public hearing at nine AM on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and provide notice and require by law regarding the creation of invest, reinvestment zone for the purpose of tax abatement to provide economic development be published in the newspaper of general circulation according to chapter three twelve of the Texas, uh, Tax Code and to take possible action regarding application for tax abatement determined to be in due from BT Brothers and Storage LLC on a capital investment approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars.
Do I have that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioners Mims, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. And then, uh, item number thirty-two on the agenda is consider to take action to give notice to other taxing jurisdictions of tax abatement between chapter three twelve of Texas Tax Code. Somebody wanna read that motion?
I move that the Commissioners Court of Anderson County conduct a public hearing on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three to provide notice to other ju, taxing jurisdiction in Anderson County that the Commissioners Court will consider an application for tax abatement from BT Brothers and Storage LLC on terms favorable to Anderson County as required by chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, motion by Commissioners Mims, second by Commissioner Dixon, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. Okay, going to the next, uh, agenda. I'll recess from the regular, uh, meeting and, uh, move into the special session, so I'll call, uh.
Special session.
The special session on October sixteen, twenty-twenty-three, uh, to order at, uh, twelve, twenty-five PM. It was posted for ten fifteen, so we're, we're well within the seventy-two hours on that agenda. And, uh, on that special session, we just have the one item. It's considered and authorized as setting the date of November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three for a public hearing and publication of notice of such hearing in a newspaper of general circulation on the creation of a reinvestment zone to be known as Anderson County Reinvestment Zone, All West for purposes of tax abatement to provide economic development within the county and to take up a consideration and application for tax abatement deemed to be in due form from All West Power LLC. And there's a motion, if somebody wants to read that, it's number thirty-one.
Uh, I move that Commissioners Court of Anderson County conduct a public hearing at nine AM on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and provide notice and required by law regarding the creation of a reinvestment zone for purposes of tax abatement to provide economic development be published in the newspaper of general circulation in accordance with chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code and to take possible action regarding application for tax abatement determined to be in due from All West Power LLC on a capital investment of approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So ordered. Okay, the next item is consider to take possible action, give notice to other taxing jurisdiction of tax abatement between chapter three twelve of Texas Tax Code. Somebody wanna read that motion in there?
I move that the Commissioners Court of Anderson County conduct a public hearing on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three to provide notice to other taxing jurisdiction in Anderson County that the Commissioners Court will consider an application for tax abatement from All West Power LLC on tax terms favorable to Anderson County